All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, which is being called to order at 6:07 PM. Madam Clerk, please take oral call.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moe Badun.
Here.
Nancy Breyer, currently absent. Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point, I'd like to ask Councilman Hassan Ahmad to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Next up on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Council Chair, Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda of the regular meeting of April 26, 2022, as submitted.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I'd like to walk on an item on the agenda.
Okay.
Recording stopped.
Well, what is it?
Well, here's.
All right, thank you. What I'd like to do is add this on. It's a motion by Councilman Wenzel. They have City Council, Direct Corporation Council.
Okay.
Through the Council Chair.
If you could do, okay, so I read it. I would have preferred to have gotten this ahead of time, but we'll go ahead and allow it to be added on. But let's pick where we're going to have this on before we go ahead and read it. So we'll have a discussion at that particular point.
Council Chair, if you remember, I did discuss this with.
Right. But we didn't add it on, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, what is it?
Nine F.
Nine F, okay. So, motion to add, the motion by Councilman Wenzel on nine F.
Support.
All in favor, please state aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed?
Council Chair. Could I, could I read this just so that people know what it is?
Okay.
On the agenda. It's a motion by Councilman Wenzel. They have City Council, Direct Corporation Council, through the Council Chair, to draft language for a charter amendment slash addition. This charter amendment slash addition would prohibit any development on a Warren Valley golf course north of the clubhouse. We are requesting this language be drafted by our next regular meeting, May 10, 2022. The actions taken to expedite this matter should be done so that it could be given to the clerk's office no later than 5:00 PM, August 2, 2022. This would ensure that this issue would be on the November ballot for the residents of Dearborn Heights to decide.
Support. Okay. Thank you. So this will be a nine F. We'll have a discussion on that on nine F. Okay, so next up on the agenda, we had Agenda Approval. There was a motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Ahmad, with the addition by Councilman Wenzel's. Any discussion on this? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on the agenda is item number four, Approval of the Minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 12, 2022, as outlined in four A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item number four B, Recommendation, I'm sorry, Recommended Motion of Dearborn Heights in regards to Minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of April 19, 2022, as outlined in four dash B.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings and Common on Agenda Items Only. You will have two minutes to speak on anything that's on the agenda, and please state your name, the city you live in, and the street you live on. We'll go ahead and go in person first, and if not, we'll go ahead and move on to people on Zoom. Anybody in person that needs to speak on Agenda Items, all right? Hearing none. Oh.
Where do you get the agenda?
I'm sorry?
Where do you get the agenda?
Online, and then they have them at the tables there.
No one knew.
Yeah. Do you have something to speak on the agenda or public comments? Okay, no problem. All right, Madam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom on Agenda Items?
No hands up.
Okay, nobody up? Just making sure. Okay. Next up is Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims six dash one through six dash 97 as submitted.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Consideration of Bids. City Engineer Deb Bid Award.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award a bid for design work for the Police Dispatch Center renovation project to Partners in Architecture PLC in the amount not to exceed $43,400. In addition, authorize Corporation Council to prepare a contract and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the contract. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign a necessary warrant and authorize the treasurer to issue payment from GL account number 101-300-981.000 as outlined in seven A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion on that? I'd like to add a little comment. First of all, thank you, Mr. Deeb, for bringing in this company or recommending this company. Or is he, there he is. I can tell you firsthand, years ago, when we were considering the combined dispatch, and I went over there myself, the fire chief in Dearborn and a couple of Dearborn council members, Councilman Mike Serini, now Council President. And although I'm not an engineer like you are to be able to look over there from an engineering perspective, but just at least visually, it was well put together, well organized. It had multiple spots, some for fire and then some for different cities. So you'd have, each city would have, at least in every particular case, on the front would be for police, on the back would be for fire. And I noticed that that's, this same company did the work over there. And it was very, very, at least from my perspective, very impressive work that they did over there. So, good job putting this together, thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd also like to kind of echo everything you were saying here. It's a new day in Dearborn Heights. I think this dispatch center was definitely much needed. I know I toured this with Councilman Muscat as well, both in Dearborn with Councilman Tom Wenzel. And knowing that the work that you were able to put in this room, I can only imagine how up to speed it's going to be over at the dispatch center. So congratulations to you, Mr. Deeb, and I hope, I look forward to seeing what it's going to look like at the end.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman.
Do you think we can have Mr. Deeb just explain to the residents exactly what we're doing at the dispatch, briefly?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So this project was, it's been in the works for about a few years now. It was decided that we are going to have our own dispatch center at the police department. And so, an assessment was made of the existing facility and what the needs are to get us where we want to be. So there are some things that are mandated by the emergency system. And so, we evaluated the existing facility and looked at best-in-class elsewhere. And then this project was, this is the design phase only. So we have to work within what we have. And so, we invited professional companies there specialized in this type of work, and then took them on a site visit. So they actually, you know, reviewed the existing facility and they were able to make good recommendations as to what needs to be. We interviewed the operators, so we had them on site. They actually watched the facility, interviewed the operator, interviewed the fire, the police chief, and asked for, you know, things that need, you know, like the angle of the sun facing the windows and its effects on the employees, things of that nature. The shortcomings of the existing room, exits, storage, break rooms. So it was reviewed in detail before the proposals were made. And we had two proposals. And this company, we, I, you know, checked their work elsewhere. By the way, this is the same company that did the evaluation for the fire station for us. They did an amazing job, excellent work.
Not the, not the first station.
No, not, not the original design, no, no. The evaluation of the causes of the shortcomings. So this is the company that actually evaluated it for us. So they did the actual evaluation, not the original designers, absolutely. And that's their, that's their type of work. That's what they do. Emergency command centers, as the Council Chair indicated. That, I didn't see it.
That's a whole.
It is impressive, I heard.
You know, the best I can remember, although I'm not a Batman movie fan, but I don't know why, when I walked in, I felt like I was in a Batman movie with like
Impressive.
technology galore all over the place. But they handle, obviously, the whole county.
Right, right.
But the fact, the point I'm making is the fact that this particular company put that together and designed it.
Yes.
At a county high level, obviously, hopefully.
So within our budget, within our budget, this company is going to give us the best that we can, you know, that will match our needs. I mean, it's going to be designed for our use and will take us to the next level.
Right.
That's the intention, anyway. And this is the design, so we'll be back to you when the design is complete to actually bid the construction.
And one of the questions I had in here was, and you kind of answered it, but I just want a little bit, maybe a little bit more in depth in regards to how much input you had from the dispatchers and the police department, but also the fire department.
Absolutely.
And all three departments had input as far as what they would like in the design.
Yes.
One of the things I know is, the original, what we have now is it's dark, like no tomorrow.
It is, it is. So lighting was an issue. The elevated floor was an issue. I indicated the windows, window treatment was an issue. It still is today. I mean, to a point where they actually put bed sheets in some instances. There are a lot of shortcomings in the facility, so. But that was the intention behind having a walkthrough with the designers. We wanted the people, I didn't want them to design in a vacuum. I want them to see the facility, see what we're facing. So when they put a proposal together, they're actually basing it on real, real-life conditions. And this is what we have.
So based on your expertise, when do you foresee that we'll have the new dispatch center up and running, roughly?
So with your approval, today, we should be able to NTP in order to proceed a design. They're talking about 90 days design, and then we can bid it.
So is it possible that by the end of the year we'll have a new dispatch?
We will be pretty close.
Pretty close, okay, great.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Deeb, when did you actually start the walkthrough and everything? When was that, when was that done? When you guys walked through?
I have a file.
And started this procedure?
I would say November. I have the original documents. I'm gonna say it was November.
Okay, thank you.
I need you to go one more.
Council Chair.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Well, I've looked over this briefly. It looks pretty good. I can say that myself and maybe one or two others sitting up here fought for this. Some of us were against it. But the effort that I personally put into this, the fact that it's been going on for six months and we haven't had any, you know, updates on this, I mean, I would like to go on through the walkthrough. I think the most important thing is to get the employees' input for design. I know you did that, but I think that would be the most critical input.
Okay.
Like I said, I wish I could have came with the walkthrough. I mean, we did walkthroughs there. We were actually, one, I'm not going to mention any names, but myself and Councilman Muscat weren't treated too well when we went there. And we fought for this, and we got our way on it. And I'd like to be more, more involved with updates, you know, weekly or something, or as often as possible, because we did fight for this. And I don't want to say we deserved it no more, but I think, you know, it's just reasonable.
Will do.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Mr. Deeb, I love the report. I see they worked on like big stuff, especially in Macomb County. But just looking at the bids, there was, I mean, it seems like we got a great deal. Are you comfortable with?
Yeah, so like I said earlier, this is the same company that did the evaluation for the fire station. So, and the intention, our intention was a mandatory walkthrough. The mandatory walkthrough was to make sure that everyone was on the same level field. You all get to see what we're after. So you get to ask questions. We showed, we showed everyone. Now, as to why one was much more expensive, that company is always expensive. I've dealt with them before, but, you know, it is, it is a public bid. And they bid on the same documents. They walked, the walkthrough was conducted, and they were.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Chair, Councilman, go ahead. All right, just two questions, quick ones. I've seen in the past, and I'm not saying it's going to happen, are we, do you foresee us, you know, with, you know, inflation being so expensive, coming back and saying, hey, you know, we're going to have to amend this and go up an extra 10, 15, 20?
Okay, so this is design.
And it's not up to you or the head, because if wood continues to go up, material continues to go up, we're going to have to reamend that.
So this is design work. So I'm not, I'm not as concerned about design work because the fees are the fees. Now, construction, because we had a set budget that was set before COVID, so we may have to play with the budget, but not the design part. So we will design it. Now, I mean, we can always coach the designer during the work to pick less expensive options if you wanted to make the budget. Or we can just work together and try to find out if we can find other sources, because I'm hearing grants might be, this is grant-eligible, so we might be able to.
My second question is, this is not going to affect any of the dispatch employees while they're at work? Where will they be working while construction and everything else is happening?
That was one, that was one of the questions that were brought up during the walkthrough, yes.
Yes, so.
Yeah, we have spare, you know, one or two, I believe, positions that will be utilized during the construction.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chair.
I saw a question. Can, can you tell the residents or the viewers what the budget's going to be? You don't know?
No, it's so fluid. We, I heard 400, that could be more because in the walkthrough, other issues that were not taken into account when the budget was put, i.e. the cooling system. Mechanic, I mean, the cooling system was not taken into account. We, it was assumed that the cooling system was sufficient in that building when the budget was put together. There were many, not complaints, but concerns during the walkthrough that it is, that's not the case. Another item was brought up, large-ticket items. I mean, I'm not talking about small-ticket items. Large-ticket items were the emergency generator. See, these are, these will have great impact. So we have to walk through them. We'll work through these things. We'll find out if we can make it work within our budget. If not, we'll just have to amend that.
Yeah, I'm sure when, I'm assuming when you're talking about the cooling system, it's the cooling system for the computers, right? Not air conditioning for the people.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry.
Because the computers have to be cooled. Normally with a, inside the floor itself, it's an elevated floor.
Elevated floor, and then the cabling, the cabling of that existing floor, I believe the building is, what, 20 years old now? A little over, 19. So I'm hearing some of the IT cabling is not, you know, compatible with newer technologies. So we may have to do some updates on that.
Is there TIFA money available for this?
The TIFA person was with us, yes.
Good.
And we are.
Well, you know, you're like the Midas. You got the golden touch. Everything you get your hands on turns out really good, and we're glad to have you taking care of this.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. We'll get it done. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Deeb. Yes, sir, may I ask? All set? Okay, thank you, Mr. Deeb, appreciate it. Job well done. We didn't vote on it, okay. So motion, this is for item seven A, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Badun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight A, Appointment of City Assessor.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City concur with mayoral appointment for Ms. Kimberly Comer as a city assessor effective June 1, 2022 in accordance with Section 5.14 of the City Charter as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, go ahead.
I personally worked with Ms. Comer for about almost five years on the tax appeal board. She's an outstanding assessor. She cares about the residents, and she's always top-notch with the service.
Yeah.
I'm happy with that.
And I, for myself, I've also worked with her on the tax review board, a little bit with her, but with Tony Fuco mostly, mostly with Tony. And I can tell you, I mentioned this in the past, our assessing department was usually very problematic. And since this particular company's come on, they've done nothing but a great job, and I've heard nothing but compliments from a lot of residents. So good job to them. And then they're very polite on the phone when people call them to ask them questions. Very accommodating. So I'm definitely, personally, as a person, I'm definitely in favor of this particular company. So good job.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
And, you know, I know we're giving out kudos today. Hopefully it's going to be a short meeting, but I wanted to also agree, Kimberly, with my experience with her, has been outstanding. I've actually put frog friends on the phone. I've let her send voice notes to group chats, and she's responded to, anybody that responded to those group chats. Right on you, rock, Kimberly. God bless you. Thank you so much for always being so amazing.
Okay. Any other discussion items? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eight B, Community and Cultural Relations Commission Appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I think it's only fair that I read this one. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with a mayoral appointment of Mrs. Laura Sernudo to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, term to expire August 2, 2023. In addition, remove Mohammed Badun as a voting member and appoint him as the ex-official council member, term to expire January 2025, as outlined in eight B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I just want everybody to know that I am removing myself as a voting member, but I'm staying active with the Cultural Relations Commission. I had this conversation with the mayor. It was a decision, I think, that we needed to fill in and somebody that can be a lot more involved. Where I'm still there, involved, just giving my advice to the entire commission.
And actually, a resident contacted me today, and I called her back, but I didn't hear back from her. But just to answer her question, I myself would still be on there as an ex-official, and I verify that with the mayor that you can have two ex-officiales on that particular council. I was not a voting member before and will continue to not be as a voting member, but there could be two ex-officiales on the.
Council Chair, you're also my recommendation to be an ex-official.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion items on that? Hearing none, let's go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. City Clerk Senior, purchase and payment of desktop computers and budget amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of two Dell Optiplex 5490 all-in-one desktop computers in the amount not to exceed $1,500 each. One computer will be used in a clerk's office, and payment will be issued from the clerk capital outlay account under $5,000. The second computer will be used for the election. Office of payment will be used, issued from the election capital outlay account number 101-190-981, or point 000. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign a necessary warrant and a treasurer to issue payment upon receipt. Furthermore, authorize the comptroller to amend the budget as follows. From clerk's part-time account 101-215-706.010 to clerk capital outlay under $5,000, account number 101-215-981.500 in the amount of $1,500 as outlined in nine A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Also, just to, you know, the clerk's office, though I go in there often, I see those computers. I think I've even told them what's going on on these computer screens and the computers from the 60s. I'm glad you're also being updated. I'd love to see someone in City Hall be updated. I know I've seen our HR directors, and that one looks really outdated as well. So maybe she can come in next week and request for some updated computers, just so that we're staying, you know, up to gauge with the technology today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine B, Treasurer Hicks Clayton, Quarterly Investment of Funds Report for March 31, 2022.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council received, know, and filed a quarterly investment of funds report from March 31, 2022, as outlined in nine dash B.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussions on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I think Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton is on Zoom, would like to say something.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel. I'm sorry, go ahead, Treasurer.
Thank you. I wanted to, if you would, with your motion, the policy that's attached to this item, that that not only has to be reviewed annually, but the council, the governing body, should move to approve it if you would kindly do so. That is based on and compliant with Public Act 20 of 1946. So that way, we're in full compliance, and I can send that to our banking institutions, if you would please. Thank you.
So Treasurer, the policy there, is that, because I looked through it, but I, right, but it's not, I know, but it's not, the policy was not what I was reviewing. I was reviewing the quarterly report primarily. So the question to you, is that a part of the same policy that was given us a while back?
Yes, it's annually.
Same one.
It should come before you annually, yes.
Nothing's changed, okay.
Nope, nothing has changed. It's got to be compliant with Public Act 20, and that's a requirement by state law for all treasuries across the state of Michigan.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried.
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Let the record reflect that Nancy Breyer has joined the council meeting.
Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item nine C, Chief of Staff Hernandez, New Assessment Contract with Anthony Fouco, Assessing Consultant, Inc.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the assessment contract city of Dearborn Heights between the city and Anthony Fouco, Assessing Consultant, Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor, Bazzy, and clerk Lynn Sienna to execute this contract on behalf of the city. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign a necessary warrants and authorize the treasurer to issue payment from GL account 101-209-818.000 as outlined in nine C.
This meeting is being recorded.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Badun. Any discussion on that? But before we do, we have our assessor.
Can you unmute? It has to be muted.
Okay. Go ahead, Assessor.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank the city council and the administration for the opportunity to continue to serve this great community and to joyfully be there for the public and just to continue the work that I think we're doing, which is turning out pretty good. And I'm very excited to keep working with the city of Dearborn Heights.
Excellent. Now, since I have you on the line, Kimberly, I had a little bit of a question. So although you do a great job, I wanted to get a breakdown, the contracts were 330,000. And when we started way back when, I'd estimate, would you say, what, about five, seven years ago? About five years?
Um, I, we started, I believe the company started with the city in 2016.
Okay. And when we started, if I'm not mistaken, was that 250,000, is that correct?
Um, I actually was not the.
Right, Tony was.
Of the company at that time. Yeah, I don't have the exact number in front of me.
Okay, so let's backtrack then to last year. What I'm trying to, okay, what was it last year exactly? Was it, I know it wasn't 330,000. And I know you asked for an additional field person, if I'm not mistaken, which I presume that 330,000 would include that, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so do you have what it was last year by any chance?
Um, I believe it was 285.
That's what I thought. Yeah, I thought it was in the high 2s. So then you. That's what I thought. Yeah, I, I thought it was in the high twos. So then you asked for a field appraiser, which was, uh, trying to recall the amount from a few weeks back, was it sixty or something?
We're estimating approximately thirty.
Okay. So we got thirty thousand plus two hundred and eighty-five, but then we have a jump up to three hundred and thirty thousand. So do you have a, at least a general breakdown as far as why the increase to three hundred and thirty thousand?
Um, typically every year, the, our contract has been set up where it increases by the state given rate of inflation every year. So we included that rate of inflation increase. And then there was also the additional training, which is a new requirement by the state that they didn't have prior to the past year. The, the law went into effect this upcoming year. So there's additional training that's required for the staff that the city requests to have on site.
Council Chair.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was just going to say, if you needed a clarification, I think what Ms. Comer is saying is that the escalator is taking it very close to the rate that we're talking about, except for the additional person and the mandatory train.
Right.
So.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion items on that? All right, hearing none. Let's go ahead and take that to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Congratulations. Next up is Fire Chief Brogan, purchase and payment of SCBA masks.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of three SCBA masks from pressure vessel testing in the amount of four thousand two hundred dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payment upon receipt from capital outlay account one oh one dash three three five nine eight one zero 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 as outlined in nine D.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Conston, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan, purchase and payment of Rapid Intervention Team RIT kits.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchases of two Rapid Intervention Team RIT kits from pressure vessel testing in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the necessary warrant and the treasurer to issue payment upon receipt from capital outlay account one oh one dash three three five dash nine eight one zero 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 as outlined in nine dash E.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda was a walk-on by Councilman Tom Wenzel, and he's already read it at this particular point. Councilman Wenzel, you wanna just read, at least as quick, I know we've already read it once, but let's read it as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that City Council Direct Corporation Council Miyaki through the council chair to draft language for a charter amendment slash addition. This charter amendment slash addition would prohibit any development on the Warren Valley Golf Course north of the clubhouse. We are requesting this language to be drafted by our next regular meeting by May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. The actions taken to expedite this matter should be done so that it can be given to the clerk's office no later than five PM on August second, two thousand twenty-two. This would ensure that the issue would be on the November ballot for the residents of Dearborn Heights to decide. Thank you.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Wenzel, supported by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Well, that would be during public comments, sir, if you don't mind. You'll be allowed to speak. I, I'm sorry, on agenda items, that's why earlier I said on agenda items, you could have spoken. But I will allow you to get up and speak during public comments, sir.
Council Chair, I'm so sorry. I don't know if they were allowed to speak because there were, this agenda item was added.
After?
Yeah, so I think.
Was it added afterwards? I don't.
Yeah, it was. We added it on.
I know we added on, but I don't.
But we didn't have it on before, so nobody knew what was coming on, so.
I know, but it was under agenda approval before public hearing and comment on agenda items. Okay, I'm gonna allow you, go ahead, sir, just because of the possible potential. Go ahead. Two minutes, please.
My name is Cass Wegson.
City and Street eleven.
I live in Dearborn Heights, eight one fifty-two Virgil. Uh, you were speaking about Warren Valley and you were talking about construction north of the clubhouse, is that right? Sorry.
Uh, that's the.
Are you drawing a line from this, a direct east and west line from the subdivision to Beach Daily? And not just behind the clubhouse, because in front of the clubhouse is all parking lots. And you can leave it there. And is your idea of maybe building something in front of that just before Warren Avenue?
Okay, well, sir, just to make it clear, this is not my motion, this is a motion by Councilman Wenzel. So, uh, let me just make sure, just one second, Councilman. Were you all satisfied with your questions, sir?
Yes.
I'm gonna allow them to answer you, but I just wanted to make sure you're all satisfied.
Yes, yes. I, I work in Warren Valley and I was very disappointed to see what happened this year.
Okay.
And, and I don't like the looks of what it is. And the people have an awful lot more to say about this than I would think that you people here. We elected you. But we, the people, should have a bigger voice in it than what, what's going on right now.
Okay, but let's, let's let Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, um, thank you, thank you for that, because that, that's one of the reasons I want this on the ballot, to have not just seven people make a major decision like this, but all the voters in Dearborn Heights have a chance to say what they, they feel. Seven people's opinion is, is good, but for this matter, this is one of the biggest investments we have in the city of Dearborn Heights. And right now, um.
It's a loser now.
It's, it's going, it's, it's, it's going to pot right now. We should be, it's, it's an investment that the residents trusted us to take care of and maintain properly. And at this time, it's, there's nothing at all being done on it. And we need to get going on this as soon as possible. But as far as the development, this could be talked about in the language. You gotta do the development of the parking lot. As far as the, the development north of the clubhouse, we, this, this gives us the opportunity to improve and make additions on the clubhouse. Um, this could be all specified, you know, in the language. This is opening it up for, for additions on the clubhouse, the parking lot. Maybe a, a band shell or a gazebo or, you know, a pavilion for entertainment or concerts. We have other things like that, but it'd all have to be approved. But this way, it goes on the agenda, I mean, on the ballot in November, it's a charter amendment. And that would prohibit, it'd be in our charter, prohibit any development of the golf course itself. And it, it, I've been told, you know, we don't want to put restrictions on us, but if the voters in the future want to develop the golf course, then it goes out for the vote for the residents again. Let the voters decide instead of, you know, four, it'll take us four members of council to approve development on golf course if, if this is not adopted.
It'd be a shame to see that thing go. I've, I've dealt with that golf course over seventy years myself, as a caddy and worked there and played there. And I'm sure there's a lot of people around here.
It's a shame that this is happening this year, because this is the hundredth anniversary of the golf course. And this should be a banner year for the golf course. And it's, it's one of the darkest days of the golf course right now.
I'm glad you're taking it to your heart. I hope you do something that's sensible and keep it an open area for us to play golf.
Do everything in my power.
Everybody around, every city around here's got a golf course and they're doing good. And we seem to be going right down the toilet. So let's see if we can do something better than that.
What's in the works, we're hoping that something comes through real soon here and we get this thing opened up. That's our, that's the plan right now, because all the rumors going around are rumors, but this is hope that none of these rumors come true. But the plan is to open this golf course.
Okay, I hope we clarified very well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Muscat.
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, I think more than what Mr. Wenzel wants to say is we don't build like the homes that were almost built there a few years back. So that kind of development is what we don't want to see. I mean, if we have development to, to, to enhance the golf course itself as a golf course, as a, as the, you know, clubhouse and maybe structures for the clubhouse, I think that would be what Mr. Wenzel was talking about. So hopefully that, that comes to fruition and I, I agree with Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, um.
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor, and then next is Counselor.
So, well, if we, whenever we decide to put any language, you know, we have to be also mindful. You know, I know Mr. Deeb and I and few people from the county, we're looking at the lower part of the, the course to put a retention detention basin. And that's to eliminate, you know, some of the flooding in the neighborhood just north of the course or even east of the course. So if we put anything, that's gonna really prohibit us to put a retention detention basin in that area. So again, you know, we, we can't prohibit putting a basin in that area. You know, we have thirty-six holes. There's one area that's flooded. And we are looking at the potential to put a retention detention basin to make sure that the neighborhoods in that area does not flood.
Council Chair, can we have a study session on this?
Let's, uh, our Counselor's next. Go ahead.
Yeah, if, if I may, one, one other point, there's, there's, you know, I appreciate that Councilman Wenzel has taken the heart, some of the things that I've suggested in the past, but there's a real hole here, which is that this is not designed to prohibit the city from selling this property. The city could just sell this property entirely and all this would be meaningless in terms of development. I mean, this is one of the things that I've ended up stating in the past in terms of the property being retained by the city by virtue of a charter amendment. So I don't know if the council would want me to include language along those lines. Maybe tweak things to try to include some of the issues that the mayor has raised. Obviously, this is, when you try to get into the weeds of prohibiting development, you're basing it on a particular location on the, on the golf course, it's, it's more complicated potentially than just, you know, keeping you from, or keeping the city from being able to sell it into perpetuity based on a charter amendment. But I'll, I'll put the other whatever I can, as best I can.
Okay.
I just need to know what it is that you want.
Thank you. Well, I, I tell you, I can speak for myself. I'm not for development on the golf course. And there's been no conversations of any type of development on the golf course, not the mayor, not myself, not by any council members. This was something that was brought forward, was it about three, four years back, whatever it was? It was botched and it was dead. But I do have a problem from a real estate perspective, just myself as Realtor. Nobody puts a condition on himself, on his own property. That just makes no sense in my brain. So when you own your own home, you know, there, there is such thing as what's called like a deed restriction. And sometimes people do that when they sell a business. They'll put a deed restriction, like, let's say somebody owns a, a building that has a, let's say McDonald's restaurant, for example, right? And let's use McDonald's. And they sell that particular building, they could put a deed restriction that no other burger place can open up in that place, because they don't want Burger King to come in and open up. I see that and I understand that. But I've never heard of it where somebody puts any type of restriction on themselves. There's no talk whatsoever of any type of development on the golf course, not with me, not with the mayor, not with anybody. So the problem I've got with stuff like this, this starts the rumor mill going all over again. And also, I'll, I'll be honest with you, Councilman, I resent the comments that are being made. Because we gotta be careful, because this is the type of stuff that starts these types of rumors. When we say, for example, you just made a statement, nothing's being done. With due respect, that is not a true statement, because I can tell you, there's been a lot of work done on the golf course as far as getting it going, a lot of meetings, as far as the administration's concerned, I'm saying. As far as getting it going, they've met multiple times with the person that took over the, the development, multiple, multiple times, to get it going. So all hands on deck are on there to get this thing going. So when we say nothing's been done.
Council Chair, I'm perceiving to, nothing's getting done to the golf course, is what I said. Nothing's getting, nothing's being maintained.
I can tell you, that's not true either, because today, myself and the mayor, and he'll get into more details, but I was on the phone with the mayor when he was working, this particular, I can't get into the details, but I'm getting it up and running. He wants it worse than anything, up and running. So nobody's trying to block this thing from being up and running. And then when we make statements such as, you know, it's a shame that on a hundred year anniversary, it's not open, but that would imply like we closed it. We didn't close it. It's open and everybody in the city wants this thing open. I don't know of anybody that doesn't want it open. So when we go into something like this, personally, I'd want to put something like this to a study session so we can see, A, the cause from a clerk's perspective as far as putting something like this on. And B, is that something that's gonna be recommended per either our corporation counsel or anybody else that maybe wants to put a, you know, I, I don't want this thing developed. I'm not saying that, but they, the residents elected us to make decisions. We are making decisions. There's no decision to develop it whatsoever. When we bring something like this up, I guarantee you the rumor mill is gonna start going and then you're gonna see people not wanting to sign up for the golf.
Council Chair, the rumor mill's been going on for years. I mean, I, I didn't start this rumor mill. I'm just, I, I'm, every one of us get calls on it every, every day. Not every day, but you know.
And then you nip it in the bud by saying there's nothing whatsoever.
Council Chair. One second, one at a time, one at a time. I said nothing's getting done to the golf course. That's why, I know things are happening. It's been a month. I hope something's happened. It's been over a month since negotiations.
But you know the complexity of what's going on, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we should, we, we should know the complexity. Thank you very much. Exactly my point. We're, we're the, we're the city council and we don't even know what's going on.
Guys, Council Chair, real quick.
One, one quick second. No, 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 it's gotta be in order. One second. Councilman Muscat was first, then Councilman Conston, then you could be next, and then the mayor.
I agree with, with Councilman Wenzel that this needs to be done, but we also need to go to a study session, I feel, to make sure that we do the things the right way, put the right language in it, and of course, find out what we're going to do about a retention basin and how that affects the golf course. If we're gonna lose holes, if we're gonna have to work around that, i- i- if we're just gonna work around it for a while and then go back to the full golf course. I'd like to know all of those answers before I vote on anything. Because if it's gonna, you know, if, if we gonna lose one or two or three holes and we relieve the flooding of the entire north end, I'm gonna be all for that real, real quick too. But again, I'm full support of Councilman Wenzel, but I think it needs to go to a study session, so all questions can be answered.
Okay, Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Council Chair. And I agree with the council chair. We're all the same, I. Nobody wants to see the golf course developed into houses. There's no discussion of that, okay? And we've had a lot of challenges. We bought the course. The operator that was there was apparently doing nothing. We, we went out for bids, we got a new operator in. Okay, we're, we're, things are, are moving along. But to bring this and put this on at the last minute without this, without even discussing it, I don't know if he discussed it with the chair, but to, to have it on the agenda before the meeting, I, I agree, it does, it, it, it does create a rumor that something other than planned is gonna go on. You're correct. You don't, we can't read the future. If I own property, I don't, and it's, it's right on the lake, I don't put a restriction on it that a house can never be built because things may change. I, I, I don't want, no one is talking about developing or putting houses on the golf course. We're working, we've got Mr. Issa in. If, if there's any language, it has to go first to the attorney general's office to be okay. So it's, it's not that quick, it's not that simple.
Okay, Mayor's next and Councilman Badun.
No, I mean, I resent the remark that Councilman made about nothing's being done.
To the golf course.
You guys, no, excuse me.
To the golf course.
Okay.
I'm gonna clarify that.
I know, but.
You mentioned it.
No, to the golf course. Okay, to the golf course.
I'm saying to the golf course.
Okay. We've had, every meeting we had, the council asked for an update and I've been giving updates. Any council member that calls my office and asks me for update, I give them update. So I don't know where that's coming from.
Your, Mayor, your updates are, we're negotiating. That's the only updates we've got. We're, we're still in negotiation. It's the only updates we've got.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna give an update here on record again. Okay, I know we are, we are in the middle of negotiation. We had a meeting last week. We had, as of the last couple of days.
I'm gonna interrupt you for just a second, because I want to clarify. I, I hate to do this, but I apologize, Mr. Mayor. This is the mayor's call to me this morning, contracts and golf course. The mayor asked to speak about this today during the announcement session.
As in every.
I had it rewritten from, from the morning.
As in every meeting, Council Chair.
Correct. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, we did have an, we, we did have, I sat down again at the golf course a few days ago. And Mr. Miyaki, their attorney again showed up. We went to the, we walked to the course. I don't know who, whoever's speaking, even you, Council, Councilman Wenzel, you can go to the golf course anytime and see the condition it was left to the city. It's embarrassing, it's, it's, it's absurd, you know, it's, it's, I don't want to say the wrong thing because they. I don't wanna say the wrong thing, because there's, there's gonna be legal action against the, the confessionaire that was there before. They took everything that was now bolted down to the ground. Okay, every time that we discuss, we discuss negotiation about something, we go back, there's something going on. We were there a few days ago, and there's a, there's a company that was up there, they delivered some stuff, and they said, hey, we delivered some stuff to the golf course. Mr. Miyaki and I were sitting there like, what the heck you guys are talking about? This course has been shut down for about a month. But this guy swears that he brought equipment to the course, to Warren Valley Golf Course, it wasn't there. So obviously, something got delivered there and it disappeared. There's stuff that was being taken away, if you go there right now, it's, there's more stuff that was taken away every, every few days. So we did, you know, we actually put a bolt around the freaking building, and a new bolt, a new cha, I mean chain, a new bolt, just so nobody can go into the course. So this is the stuff that this, this, this course was being left, this, the condition. So we're try, we're, we're negotiating, but every time we go back to look at something, something else is gone. We went, looked at the pump station a couple, Saturday or Sunday, and we found, we, we, we couldn't really start the pumps, so we had to get a company to come in and start the pumps to see what pumps are working. We found one of the pumps, the, the wires are severed, okay, severed, severed wiring. So nobody's gonna go turn anything on unless we go check to see why the wires are severed. So this is what's going on right now. So here, here's your update. Anytime you want, you can go to the golf course and you look at the condition yourself, Councilman.
It's in bad shape, the golf course itself is in bad shape.
We are trying, we are trying, we have this, we're trying to negotiate a contract, like I said. You know, we went back, and there's also liability, when you go look at the car path, and you see some of the craters, it looks like a bomb craters in some of the area, and I tell you what, as the mayor, I don't feel comfortable of opening it right now and somebody falls or something, a car goes through these things and rolls over and hurts somebody, and it's, the city's liable for it. If you're comfortable with that, I'm not.
Council Chair, thank you to the mayor, you know, it, it's, it's a very emotional topic, I, I can see where Councilman Tom Munso's coming in. I speak it from the heart, I also know that in our email, the mayor said he's gonna be giving an update on the golf course today. With respect to the mayor, you did say this, I actually went in your office and I had that conversation with you today. But I know you, Councilman Tom Munso's also been requesting via email updates, doesn't even have to be publicly, he's just, you know, getting it, and I think here on council, we just have to give and take, but we also have to, you know, give it that time. I know from golfing there last year, my friends hated golfing there, it's not a good golf course to golf at, personally. I, I go out to, you know, places in Canton, and the golf course is absolutely stunning. I come out to Dearborn Heights and I'm disappointed, it's upsetting. So whomever, you know, Mr. Issa goes in and does the work, I hope that it's gonna be updated, but I know that the residents want this open. I'm with you on it, you think, I wanna golf, I wanna be able to go in my own backyard, I live right around the block from the golf course, I absolutely wanna golf. But I also wanna make sure that there's golf carts, because I don't wanna push my, you know, I don't wanna push a bag, or I don't wanna hold the bag over me. So I know, Mayor, I think, was that your update for today?
No, all the council members got an update from Mr. Miyaki, our attorney, so, and it was, it was pretty detailed update a few days ago.
Okay.
So I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at your email.
So, I, I was able to, Mayor, just a question, I, I mean, with, with the negotiation with them, do we, do we have a timestamp, maybe the next week, two weeks, a month, just maybe so that we know?
The pumps were supposed to be inspected this week.
Okay.
Once we inspect the pumps to make sure that they're working, because it's flooded, some areas is flooded right now, because we can't turn the pumps on.
Okay.
Once we turn the pumps on, then we go to another face to go there, and they submitted an offer, but we, we're gonna submit a counter offer.
I like that, thank you. Okay, and, and I, and Tom, I swear, every single person on here shares your frustration. I swear, but I would also tell you that I would support this right here openly today. But I'm gonna tell you, I think it's also smart that we also put this to a study session, so we understand the legality of things, making sure that it's prepared and ready to go. I'm all for this. But what I would also hate is if we go ahead and vote on this, and, and the residents turn it down. And I'm not saying that it is.
That's their own prerogative.
It is their prerogative, but I'm also saying, let's make sure that the, that the terms that we put together on this, that we hold our corporation counsel properly through a study session, I'm all for that. I, I'm willing to have a study session next week before, before our, what's your hearing?
Councilman Wensel. Council Chair, that's, that's one of the things about this, is this is very time sensitive, we don't have any time spare to get this on in November ballot. Otherwise, it'll take another year and a half to get it on. This has to go, I don't know, there's different ways, it could be, it could be an addition, I don't know, that's where Mr. Miyaki's gonna have to, or an amendment, you know, we're gonna go the cheapest and fastest way possible. So that I say, this is, this is something that's very time sensitive, and to vote on this today, yes, and anyone that doesn't agree with this, then you're not, you know, the residents should take part in this.
Wait, 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 wait.
But, so by us voting yes on this, it just gives the corporation counsel a head start to start, start this. And then if we have a study session in a week or two weeks, we decide, you know, not, you know, okay, this is what we wanna do, we gotta get the ball rolling here, you know, we waited too long. Ever since we bought this golf course, and I've been on city council dozens and dozens of times, I've asked, where, where is the language that says there's no development on the golf course? And I've been told answers like, well, you know, it takes council approval to develop it, or, I, I don't want that. I want the residents to have a say, I want it in the charter, and if there's a retention basin or something like that, I mean, that, I'm not, I'm not for that, I mean, one retention basin, a small one's gonna alleviate all the flooding and, and the north end, but on the south end, we're, we're taking a thirty-six acre retention basin to alleviate this, I don't think a small retention basin on a golf course is gonna do too much, I don't know, I haven't gotten the engineering, that's the first I heard of it tonight, about a retention basin on the golf course, I've never heard of it, I don't think any of the council has heard about it. So these are, you know, these are, we need to vote yes on this tonight, and get the ball rolling, and have a study session, and then we could tweak it after that. Thank you.
Any other council members?
Council Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm with, also with the study session before I do, before I make a decision on this, I'm, I mean, but I'm with Tom, with Councilman Wensel. I'm not with any development, but I need to hear from the engineering department first to see exactly what do they need to do before we put anything to, on the ballot, so. I'm definitely with the study session before making a decision.
Okay, Council Miyaki, go ahead.
How about this as a recommendation, that you refer this matter back to the administration and direct me to prepare language that addresses certain potential concerns, including development, retention basin, and/or sale of the golf course. And then you tell me a date that I need to have this done, you come up with a study session date, and I'll get some language together so that Councilman Wensel feels like we're moving on it. The rest of you have some more concrete stuff in front of you, and then we're still working within a, a timeframe that might be able to work for everyone, and, but still have the study session, because it appears that that's, at least my observation, it seems like that's the consensus of the council, to have a study session. So, I mean, I could start working on something if you give me a little direction, or like I said, go over the options, you have me sometimes prepare stuff, I could potentially do something along those lines without adopting this specific motion, because, I mean frankly, this specific motion, I, I don't think it covers everything that would need to end up being covered, both per the mayor and, and just more generally. I mean, so, just a suggestion.
Thank you, wait, one, one second, we gotta follow, one second, anybody else?
Yeah, Council Chair.
No, I'm sorry, Councilman, I already gave you a spot, so, one second. You all set? Anybody else? Okay, Councilman, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Muscat was next, sorry, go ahead.
Well, there's a motion on the floor that we need to vote on, okay? And we, and, and no matter if it passes, fine, if it doesn't pass, we still can make a motion to refer this to a study session and to authorize the mayor or to corporation counsel to start drafting something in the meantime. So I, I think that's the best way to kill this, we, we, we'll, we'll, we can vote on this, the way it is, the motion is, then we can make re-motion to have a study session with corporation counsel, starting to work on this, if that's, but, but there is a motion on, on the table.
Yeah, this motion would have to be turned down, and then you have to refer to a study session.
Well, if it's not, then it, it passes, because, but there is a motion on the table.
Right.
Council Chair, I just wanted to, you know, remind all the council members here, that's exactly, this is just to have you, Council Chair, direct corporation counsel to start drafting language. That's, that's, this isn't to, you know, put it, put it on the ballot or anything, this is to start drafting language, and that's what every one of us just said here. You know, that, that's what we wanna do, so I think there's no reason why not to vote yes on this for the residents of Dearborn Heights.
Okay, no problem.
Council, Council Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, a couple of things, I can hear the urgency in the, of your concern, okay? And I know you have a lot of meetings this week, but there's, Thursday evening's open, I mean, not Thursday, okay?
So what we'll do, if you don't mind, either you or Dana call me tomorrow, and we'll line up an exact date, but, but, once we vote on it.
And then you can amend the, the motion on the table, right, to refer it.
Well, because, you could, you could make a motion to amend the main motion at this time, if Councilman Wensel is not willing to accept it as a friendly amendment. You could also end up tabling it and referring this matter over to me, consistent with what Councilman Muscat said. I mean, there, those are two different actions to address this.
Thank you.
Okay, well, so, but the first, we have to vote on this first, and then we could decide if we will.
No, you can, I'm sorry, Council Chair, you can actually, someone could make a motion to amend the main motion.
Right.
And it would be in order, you don't have to vote on the motion as currently stated.
But he'd have to ta, he'd have to take his motion off the table.
No, not to amend.
Or amend it himself.
He, he could amend it, amend it if he wants it.
Or you can make a motion to amend it, and that ends up superseding the main motion.
Okay.
And he said, I'm sorry, can I go out, Council Chair?
Go ahead.
And you said we can make a motion to table it and do nothing with it right now, until we have the decision?
You could, you could either make a motion to table it, or you could make a motion to amend this motion, to refer the matter to corporation counsel, to prepare appropriate language, as well as, or appropriate possible language, given the council's concerns, and to refer this matter to a study session on a date to be determined by the council chair and the city clerk.
Council Chair, you know, I would amend my motion if, if in the motion, it keeps the, the part that says you direct the corp, the corporation counsel to start, yeah, to start, and right, like tomorrow, we can do this, right? I mean, I, I don't wanna take out anything that says we're not gonna direct him to get going on this, because I, my main motion here, idea of it, is to get going tonight. And if he starts doing it tonight, and then with, with the study session as soon as possible, to talk more about it. But we need to get going on this, we can't, we can't drag our butts on this, we got it, we have to, I've, I've talked to several people about the time, kinda, time it takes to get this on. If it is, I mean, there's different, I've had different input about some of these things, they don't have to go to the Attorney General, or if it's a add-on or some, but that way, the corporation counsel can let us know exactly what we can and can't do with this, and the procedure. I know I've got some different procedures from amendment, uh, charter amendments in the past, and I can share them with everyone, I can give copies, but, yeah, just as long as we keep there that we direct corporation counsel tonight to start language, and, and take, take this to a study session, so we can talk about it further.
If you amend your motion, you could add that in.
Yeah, well, that's basically what I want, I wanna just, just add on that, refer it to a study session. As soon, as soon as time possible, but the, the council chair.
If we vote this yes, then the clerk's office will be calling tomorrow.
Council Chair, can, can you give a, can you do, give us the respect of notifying us, other council members, when this date is, just in case someone can't make it?
Always do, always do.
Council Chair, just to make it a little bit easier, I move that we amend the motion to move this to a study session and to authorize the corporation counsel to start drafting language as, as this motion here immediately states, so we can get the ball at least moving until we have a study session.
Including some of the other possibilities?
Yes, with all the other possibilities, so we can discuss everything.
You kinda got that? Yeah, yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
So you'll second my motion on that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion, okay?
So, based on Councilman Muscat's motion, and seconded by Councilman Wensel, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You could just basically say, he's offering that as a friendly amendment, it's accepted by Councilman Wensel, and that does it without having to actually have a, a vote.
I am offering that as a friendly amendment to Mr. Wensel.
You second that?
You second that, Mr. Wensel? Do I have to second, I don't have to second, do I?
Yeah, you just have to accept it.
Yeah, I accept it, yes.
We don't have to vote on that then, right?
Then you have to vote on the motion as amended.
Yeah, so voting on the motion as amended, with the friendly motion from Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Wensel. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item thirteen A, business license renewals.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved that Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business licenses for Antonio's Cucina Italiana, located at two six three five six Ford Road, Elagio Banquet LLC located at two three nine zero zero West Warren, and Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge located at two seven two two five Warren, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion on that?
Uh, Council, Council Chair.
Go ahead.
You know, the way Councilman Muscat said Cucina Italiana.
I thought he was Italian for a second.
Just to bring a little bit of lass and joy into this.
Italiano restaurant.
You're a great man, Mr. Muscat.
Everybody has a good man.
Tell that to my wife, will you?
Okay, so motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Baydun, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. I, I do wanna stay, I, I thank, welcome one of our newest members in the city of Dearborn Heights in the last few years, a couple of years, Elagio Banquet, doing a great job, a great addition to our city, and I'd like to, not welcome, but continue, all of us to support Antonio's Cucina Italiana, otherwise known as Antonio's on Ford Road. As a matter of fact, I'm having dinner tomorrow night at their original place, Roman Village, tomorrow night, so.
Are you, are you treating everybody?
No.
Oh, you're not.
So all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Let's, uh, let's break that party up.
Yeah.
I'm about to pull up on the meat.
Next up is, we're gonna go ahead and, to go to comments from council members, Councilman Baydun.
All right, guys, I, I, I know there's, there's a lot of tension, I, I feel like in these past coming weeks, there's been a lot of tension amongst this council. I, I want us to know that when we first started, you know, January first, we were all excited, happy, giving each other kudos, hugging one another, let's just keep that in mind. We, we, we shouldn't be, you know, you may, you should be able to give and take, and if somebody has a different opinion, we shouldn't be too emotional, we shouldn't, you know, dislike one another. At the end of the day, every single one of us are doing, are on here today, not to look beautiful, not for name recognition, because we sincerely care. And I just wanna put it for the record, I'm one hundred percent, a thousand percent opposed to any development on that golf course. I, I do not want anybody to build on that golf course, I think it's green space, I think the city needs a green space. I think it's nice to be able to say that Dearborn has a hundred year old golf course. I know the, I know when I went into the mayor's office today, I closed the door and I said, and I'm gonna say it right here, though, even though I closed the door on the mayor, I said, what is going on with the golf course? He said, Mo, I swear, it's a lot worse than anybody anticipated. Those are his words verbatim, you can ask him. And if there's anybody that's, you know, sending him emails and checking in on this golf course, I am asking on that golf course, as I'm sure everybody else on this council has. So, so to Tom and to the rest of my colleagues, we're all frustrated, I understand how that is happening. Second thing here that we're gonna talk about, I've been reached out from, by Hulu, Hulu is doing a documentary on Tasting the Nation. It's a show, it's in their fourth season, they are going to be coming to Mr. Mackey's Festival this Friday. If anybody would like to see them or be on camera, you guys can join us on Friday. The producer went over to the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, they're actually gonna start there, and they're gonna make their way over to the festival. If you wanna look pretty and be on Hulu and be on Taste the Nation for the fourth season, come on by to the festival from eleven to three. As we come to an end to Ramadan, we're gonna be, a lot of Muslims around the world are gonna be embarking on the Eid celebration. You know, it's, it's a great time, you're gonna be able to have your cup of coffee that morning, you're gonna be able to wake up and, and, you know, go to Eid prayer, and it's, it's, it's always a great celebration. So to, for those who don't know, Eid celebration is like Christmas to the Muslim, you know, Muslim world. And so we're gonna wake up extremely early, we're gonna go pray at the mosque, we're gonna go eat with our families, because we're no longer fasting. I know the Amity Foundation is gonna be doing a Eid drive, where we're gonna be able to package gifts and give them out to those who don't, aren't able to, you know, help out their children. So if anybody would also like to partake in that as well, the Amity Foundation will be hosting. So if anybody would also like to partake in that as well, uh, the Amity Foundation will be hosting a toy drive on Sunday at eleven AM as well. God bless you guys. Telegraph of the Amity Foundation building. I don't know the exact address, but...
It's a former Comerica Bank, uh, on Telegraph between Cherry Hill and Ford Road on the east side of the street. Halfway between.
Between Cherry Hill and Wilson.
Cherry Hill and Wilson.
Cherry Hill and Wilson, but I can get you that address after, uh, this meeting, 'cause I don't want to violate the Open Meetings Act while I'm texting. Thank you.
Uh, just a quick comment. Just wanted to commend, um, the different vendors that have been out in Dearborn Heights during the last month. And I specifically went over, uh, three, four times to, uh, Elite Sports, uh, their vendors and had some good food. But I just want to commend, Mike Mackey happens to be here. I want to commend him on, um, I even went there a couple of different times in the afternoon, just to check. And even in the afternoons, where there was nobody there, the place was pretty much spotless, except for one bottle of water that I see. But beyond that, the place was spotless. So I want to commend them on that. It was well organized. It was safe. Um, lots of people there. It's pre-packed, and, uh, great job as always, so just want to commend.
Councilman, go ahead. Uh, thank you, Council Chair. Um, a few things I want to thank, Mr. Conrad, for answering my emails and personally reaching out to me today, or yesterday, discussing things on the, uh, on current claims. I thank you very kindly, sir, for taking your time out to do that. And, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm receiving phone calls and also, of course, social media about Priority Waste Missing Trash Days. Uh, I, I, I don't know how to answer it other than call Priority. At one point, I was able to ta, take care of that myself by calling the route supervisor and having them go right out and picking things up, uh, either by maybe they just missed the street, or they're new to the area and don't know where all the streets are yet, or trying to figure out, you know, like, like in my neighborhood, it's that kind of a maze, and they go down one street, they could easily miss another. Uh, so I'd like to have something done about this, so we can nip this in the bud now. And, uh, just to let everyone know, there's a, uh, a lot of complaints about Priority on Facebook, or the ordinance department on social media. Look, folks, I understand the frustration. That's what brought me here to City Hall is blight. That's when I first started coming to city council meetings. But I can tell you this. It starts with ourselves. I've said this before. It starts with the citizens. You got trash flying around the neighborhood, because people are just throwing their trash in without putting them in bags. So when the garbage, uh, what, when, when, when a can is picked up and dumped, it flies everywhere, especially when it's windy. This is on us. And, and if you see a box rolling down the street, be neighborly. Pick the thing up. Cut it up. Put it in, in your own bin. I mean, that's, that's being neighborly. What, you know, we, we did that years ago. Let's not stop doing it, okay? And, and the other thing, Mr. Mayor, is the complaint about cars still parked on the street. When are we gonna really start enforcing that? I, I, I don't know if we can deputize the ordinance department, or have a, someone, something like Dearborn Has where they have a parking enforcement, uh, because I, I've witnessed the, the rubbish guy getting out of the truck, walking over, pulling it, the bin over to pick it up. They're, they're trying to do the best, but after a while, when there's gonna be snow on the ground, or it's raining, like, heck, the guy that's not gonna want to do that, and I don't blame him, okay? Um, so, you know, we have to do something to get these cars off the street, and, and, uh, ladies and gentlemen, please keep up your yards. It's summertime. Uh, we don't want to be known as the Danny Line City. It's the Tree City, not Danny Line City, okay? And, uh, we got kids outside playing now, kids running out in the middle of the street trying to fetch their balls, so let's pay extra attention to our small children. They are small. Uh, they're young. Remember when we were kids, we did the same thing, so let's be extra careful, and thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Mayor, just want to, for those in the audience, as I mentioned, the mayor contacted me today and asked to be able to speak, to give an update to the residents on the golf course and on con... No, I, I will get to that. On contracts. I just wanted to let you guys know that that will be coming up. I know he gave us a bunch of information already on the golf course, but whatever additional stuff that you had, and on contract negotiations. Well, I just want to, you're all set?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, this is my city, and, and I'm, I'm gonna stand up for what I believe in, and what I believe is voted in by the residents is what's best for the residents. So, I'm, I'm not gonna back down on any issue. Um, you know, I, I believe that I've lived in this city longer than any other employee in Dearborn Heights. There might be one out there, but I don't think there is. So, and I've had a very vested interest in this city. I'm building a big addition on my house. I never plan to leave here. I'm gonna die here, hopefully, a long time from now. But, um, you know, I mean, I, there's things that I believe in that, you know, I've, I've been told I shouldn't talk about. Uh, it's quoted as, "Stay in my lane and, um, be a legislature, legislator." And if that's the case, then, um, Ray, you don't take any calls on blight. Or Mo, you don't take any calls on crossing, children, school crossing issues. Or Ahmed, you don't take any calls on speeding. Or Nancy, you don't take any calls on senior issues anymore. Or, uh, Bob, you don't take any calls on garbage pickup. Because, uh, these things are, are, are concerning the city, and no matter what it is, we have to speak up and represent the residents. No, he, no matter if, if, if it's considered right or wrong, that's what we were voted to do. Not just sit back here, yes, 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 and, you know, just vote things through. We're hands-on. That's what we were voted when, I believe, everyone up here, when they were running, they said, "I'm gonna be hands-on. I'll be there. I'm, you know, I'll, I'll visit the schools." It's more than just being a legislator. It's being a part of the city and representing the residents of Dearborn Heights. And, um, that's why I believe in, and I'll keep speaking my mind until a court order tells me I have to stop, and maybe not even then. But, uh, you know, it's obvious, you know, I've, I've, I'm very vocal about the con, union contracts and, uh, the golf course. And that's all I'm gonna say about that right now, but I'm, I'm not happy with either o, either of those, uh, the two of those. Um, that being said, I've got a couple of issues I want to bring up is, uh, as recently, uh, we, we've got an, an event coming up at the Richard A. Young Center, and the rain gardens behind. But as, as inside the Richard A. Young Center, and the restrooms are still not working there, and, uh... Oh, yeah, Director Lawrence L, I mean, can you, can you give us an update on that? I mean, it, it looks like one of the bathrooms is now being used as a unisex bathroom, and there's issues with the other restrooms. And we're, we're looking for people to come in, you know, be, get memberships, and we don't, we don't offer proper restroom facilities.
Yeah, hello. Um, I've been working with Mr. Deve on it, and actually, he's handling the bathroom situation at Richard A. Young now, so I'm gonna let him speak.
Okay.
So, um, Councilman, um, i- i- if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had a proposal from a company that was on the agenda, and we pulled it out, uh, because I wasn't convinced the price was reasonable. Um, so we have other companies, uh, I, I wrote the specifications on the repairs, but I still believe that the price was, it was a single bidder, and the price was excessive. Um, so we're having other bidders. Um, so we're conducting walkthrough to, uh, to, to get... I believe that the right number is half of what, uh, what, 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 what we received. So we're opening it up more to competition to try to, to get the better price, and it's happening fast, so we have one coming up soon.
I, I've heard that there's some issues in the locker room, uh, restroom facilities. Have you, have you been aware of any of that?
I was, today. I just heard about it today.
I, I just heard about it today, too, so we're looking into that. When, um, we go up there, uh, with the, uh, people who are gonna look at what needs to be done, we're gonna take a look at that, too.
Oh, great. Good to hear that. Okay. Um, okay, thank you. So, what do you, Mr. Deve, what is, what are you thinking here, I mean, over the summer? This, this should be rectified, is the restroom?
No, much sooner than that.
Much sooner?
Much sooner. We're, we're looking at immediate. So, so the, the company that gave us the price, I forgot the name, CNS, CNS, uh, company would have been, uh, would have been done by now, but it, it, again, the price was way too excessive.
Forty-three thousand dollars.
Forty-three thousand dollars.
I have people that are there, and they said, "What's wrong with the bathrooms? What's the problem? What, what is the problem there?"
So we have two different opinions, but this is what we're gonna find out real soon, if it actually justified. So it is slab upgrade. So the, the, whatever you, it doesn't have a base mark, meaning that if you have to do any work on the, on, on the, um, the pipes itself, you have to bust the concrete and then rebuild it and, you know, finish with new tiles and everything. But even with that, the, um, the, the, the cost was excessive. We believe it was excessive. So we asked a couple of companies, and they both agreed. This is a single bidder, and it was just a high, high price. I know, Councilman. So we, we, we'll get, we'll get it.
All right, thank you. I'm hoping to get that done.
I just want to let you know also, we did go out to bid for twice, and we only had one bidder, and it was the same bidder. First time it was lower, the second time was higher.
Are we putting them on the website? Remember, we talked about that?
Yeah.
The challenge is, bid net may not be enough. Are we trying to put them on the website, Facebook? Because I, I tell you, for me, I would love to see local, local bidders get these jobs.
I agree. I agree. And there are a couple of local, uh, uh, companies that we're contacting. I think the, um, uh, uh, we used to do, in my former, um, life, we used to do, um, um, small business emporiums, where we actually invite small businesses, local businesses. And then this way, you come up with a list of things and pre-approve them, so if you have, you give advantage to a local business, espe, especially on smaller-sized, uh, projects. You know, it's not a multimillion-dollar project. It's a small projects, and that, that is what we're, if you recall, last year, we did, we did the sidewalk, and we had the same problem. We had very few people. In fact, we didn't have any bidders.
But the further out they are, the higher they're gonna charge us. That's why local bidders would also be cheaper.
But you need to have an outreach program to get to these people.
But it could be as simple as Facebook, website, newspapers.
Yeah.
In addition to bid net, of course. Uh, Council...
I got, I got a couple more things here, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm a opponent of bid net. Uh, I've talked to several people, and they said, you know, it's hard to get on. They don't know when something's on. They have to check it like every day. Should be something like, they can go, they can go onto the city's website. It might be, I don't know, but it shows all the contracts coming up in, in the projects.
So, I, I've, I've looked at other communities, and, and, and the one in particular, Dearborn, had, had actually, um, 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 like a link, doing business with. And then you have, you, you establish, uh, local, uh, um, uh, company, and, and you, you, um, you make them aware. So if I was a business, if I was a plumber or, or, um, uh, concrete guy, I would go in on a regular basis and just look at my items, you know, if you have them and you have them listed. So we, we have to work with our procurement department to try to get this implemented. And I agree, um, I, I mean, it's very frustrating to me when, when I did, twice last year, we had the, um, um, the sanitary tap. We had no bidders. And we did the concrete sidewalks twice, and we had no bidders. So it, it, it's very, we had one, one on the, um, sanitary tap, and I know Dearborn has one. So, um, but they just replaced their engineer retired, and now they're DPW. So I'm going to, uh, uh, reach out to them and see what process they use, uh, because they do have, um, sanitary tap, uh, on call. And then they can activate them anytime, uh, they have an issue, like sinkhole, uh, you know, uh, repairs, and then they add it. So they do have a process in place that hopefully we can just duplicate and use local, uh, companies, like Dearborn Heights. Give them, um, in my, like, again, in my previous life, we used to give the local companies five percent advantage. So if you're within five percent of low bidder, we consider you first. So, I mean, there are a lot of things that we can do, but we need to do it internally with our own people, you know, implement it.
Don't leave, uh, Director, but, uh, I would ask you, you brought up a good point, uh, the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Issue. Do we have a contractor for that?
Twice, when they had zero bids.
I've got so many calls on that.
I'm actually, uh, yeah, we have, we have a lot of issues. I have a list of people that actually signed the request for a slab replacement. But I need to get, the company that we had before was an annual contract that was, what, twenty-ten? So I, I mean, it, it, it just, it just...
You got a comment on that?
It's just a comment on this. And maybe you can answer it, actually. There's a resident that purchased a house in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
The slabs were purchased, were paid for, and put in escrow. And it was five hundred and something dollars. Bulldog was a realtor. The resident keeps asking me and saying, you know, "I redid the slabs. They reviewed it, but they never gave me the five hundred dollars." And they've been setting it for an escrow.
Yeah, I need, I need the, I need the details. Give me, give me the details.
But I'm saying, so the resident said he's yet to receive his money.
No, you've got to contact, just contact Rick Watland.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, I got just two things here, real quick. Um, after the, uh, our recent, uh, most recent budget hearings, um, um, I was a little, a little vocal about the Eaton Center, and I, I remain to be vocal on this, and that's something I want everyone to know, that we're gonna stay on top of and make sure that that's, get treated, you know, equally. There's, there's, there's a lot of things going on in the city right now with different negotiations and everything. And there's a four-letter word that I like to use. It starts with an F. It's called FAIR, F-A-I-R. We have to be fair across the board. We don't want this scale tipping like this or like this. We want that scale to be even. And I'll fight for fairness with everything I've got. It includes the Eaton Center, union contract negotiations, golf course negotiations. And, uh, I mentioned earlier that we're having an event, um, myself, Bob Conson, uh, Watershed Stewart Commissioners, on May seventh, a week from this coming Saturday. We're having our twenty-ninth Annual E Course Creek and Rain Garden Maintenance Day. And, uh, in recent years, we've been concentrating on the rain gardens at the Richard A. Young Center. Spectacular ecological specimen there. If you don't know anything about it, you can get ahold of me. I'll tell you more about it. It's, it's unbelievable what these rain gardens do. They're great for the environment. They're great for, uh, residents to come out and work. We do it twice a year. And we're, like I said, we're gonna be doing it on May seventh, nine AM, Richard A. Young Center. Uh, there's flyers in the Vesta Bureau on this, uh, and we're looking for sponsors for this also. The, and he was interested in doing a sponsorship. The, the sponsorships are due by the, uh, by the end of the week. Make, you can make your checks payable to, uh, Watershed Stewart Commission. And we're bringing up something that, uh, Councilman Muscat mentioned. Years ago, uh, when we, we did the E Course Creek cleanup, we also added a Neighborhood Cleanup Day, that same day. For people that don't want to come all the way down there, or they don't want to do the rain garden, we're, we're asking people to maintain your property, especially out by the street and the curb. You know, clean it up, you know, uh, we know our street sweepers were shorthanded. Uh, we don't, uh, their, their, their time, uh, is, is, is been cut down a little bit, so we don't have the, the option of, you know, of putting in extra time to clean the streets, but we will clean the streets. They will be cleaned, you know, like, as good as we can. But this is a program where you can get out there, like Mr. Muscat said, you know, clean, do a little bit. You know, like, there's a famous president from the sixties. He says, "Don't ask what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." So don't ask what the city can do for you. What can you do for the city and the fellow resident? Clean your street. I'm, I'm working on something right now with Home Depot and Lowe's to get like a pallet of lawn and leaf bags. And they, and I'm, I'm trying to make them available here at City Hall. That, it'll be, it'll be posted if it, that comes through. But this is a day where we can all get together as a city, unite, and not only work on our rain garden and our creek, but clean our whole city. It's May seventh, two, a week from this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
You said something real close, I said, real quick.
Uh, I, you know, and I wanted to say this, I, I told myself that I was gonna say this. I know that the mayor and our police chief gave out a, uh, uh, quick information on what happened recently over this past weekend with an officer. Uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, th, this was, this was very new, and so to the mayor, I appreciate you giving us that update. I appreciate, uh, our police chief Hart for putting that out there, and, um, I, to be honest with you, I, I, I only knew only because I got the email. Um, so I, I just thank you guys for that, and, and I, you know, if we can continue to get things like that, that would be great. Uh, I know in the past, I've requested, uh, just to kind of get, you know, weeklies of what's happening in the city, so that everybody can know. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Allen?
Council Chair, first I have a comment about, uh, I know Councilman Wenzel mentioned about, uh, bid net, that people has to go and check all the time. I mean, even though if you're both in the city, people still have to check all the time. So is it possible, maybe if we can add like a tab on the city website, they can put their information, whenever we have work, they can get a notification by email? So maybe that would help, too, especially for local, uh, local vendors. Uh, also, I would like to mention another initiative I've been working on. I know there've been a lot of coordination between the city and Wayne County. I know Mayor Bezzi also have a bi-weekly meeting with, uh, county officials. Uh, so only it made sense that, uh, we asked the county officials to come down and, uh, meet our, uh, uh, department heads, uh, so they can meet, uh, the county department, department heads, uh, you know, uh, listen to them, see what, what kind of stuff they can offer. Uh, this way would be like person-to-person. They can have their phone numbers, and, um, they can meet and call them anytime with, uh, with their input and speed up the, the process. So I reached out to, uh, City Council Chair and the mayor. Uh, they welcomed the idea. So I reached out to, uh, Chief Administrative Officer Khalil Rahal with the county, and he welcomed the idea, too. So technically, now we're just working on a day, so we can set that day, so all the county officials and directors can come... officials and directors can come to the city, so we can have a full like presentation from Wayne County. Thank you, sir. Uh, also I would like to, uh, wish all the residents who is going to observe Monday as a holiday, Eid Mubarak, Insha Allah. Happy Eid. Thank you, Councilor Chair.
Thank you. Any other, okay, Councilman, go ahead.
Okay, first I'd like to commend Hassan, that's a great idea. And as far as Tom's program that they do every year at the rain garden and the other, I've participated three or four times, it's fantastic and everybody should try to take part in that. It's a really good thing we do. And I did have calls from a resident on Hopkins Street between Westlake and Gully, who did not have his yardways picked up. I didn't do the whole Hopkins Street to find out, but there, there were some misses there. So as far as comments, that's all I'm getting with. That's announcements.
Councilman, you had something?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Wensel for your input. Councilwoman Marge Horvath used to say that, you know, the council should try to do things as a group. And in the past, I mean, I've been through good times, bad times. We had over the years 11 different lawsuits. We're supposed to be a deliberative body. Let's do that, let's all talk to each other. Let's remember that social media is not an official form of communication and, uh, watch what we put out there. Um, and then I want to say, uh, happy Orthodox Easter to everyone who celebrated last week. Christos Anasti, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I'm going to have announcements. Uh, the mayor had asked for some time to speak in regards to the contracts and the golf course. So Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, as I mentioned, the, the golf course, I don't want to repeat myself, but basically what I mentioned earlier, uh, we're waiting to see if the company can come in and, uh, see if the pumps are operational. That's going to be a huge, uh, uh, issue if they're not working. As most of you already know, the pumps, they're, they're, each one is at least a half a million dollars. So I know that concessionaire is not going to take on that responsibility. And also, as I mentioned, you know, there's, uh, huge craters in, uh, the cart path and, uh, we, we should fix that area. You know, that's some of the stuff that we're also, uh, looking into. We can't open it, you know, with, with the craters, uh, in the car path because definitely don't want any issues. It's a big liability to the city, somebody slipping or the carts, uh, tipping over, you know, with somebody in it. So that's a liability if anybody gets hurt. So we are looking at see if we can pave, uh, the car paths, but trying to figure out who's going to do it, what fund, or if the concessionaire is going to do that. That's, that's something that we have to negotiate as well. So, uh, the, they did submit a proposal. It wasn't favorable to the city, but again, you know, we're going to put a counter proposal, we're going to submit that once we figure out what's going on with the pumps. And, uh, we, Mr. Bob Ankrapp went there several times, took pictures. And, uh, we, uh, we do have the pictures of the golf course, the condition it's in. Anybody is welcome, if you guys want it, let us know, we'll send you the pictures. If you want to go there, we'll send you the pictures so you can see the state that the course is in right now. Both the banquet, the bathrooms, and also, uh, the golf course itself, and also the pump. So we do have pictures. And, uh, that's, uh, that's that, the, the contract negotiations was, we're, we're meeting with, uh, pretty much most of the union, uh, union reps right now with all the contracts that we have, uh, on deck. Uh, we just had a meeting, uh, not too long ago with, uh, mediators, with the TPOM. We are moving forward with that meeting. And, uh, the other thing, I mean, that's it for the, for those two. Uh, but also, um, Councilman Baydo mentioned about the incident that happened, um, the other day. And, uh, it, it is my, always my intent to let the council know if any issue arises from the city. Uh, I want you to hear it from us instead of hearing it, as, uh, Councilman Constant mentioned, social media, because obviously it's not a form of communication. Um, we, uh, the only form of communication on social media, if you want to look at, uh, is our Facebook, you know, City Facebook and, uh, and also Instagram. We are updating that constantly and also the police, uh, uh, Facebook. Uh, any incident, anything that happens of interest or, you know, any concerns, uh, anything positive, negative, you know, we are posting it just to make sure that the residents are aware and also the council, uh, make sure that you guys get an email firsthand before we do anything, as I did, um, a few days ago. You know, we did have an incident, you know, just to, for the residents who are not, you know, I've seen some of the concerns that some, I've gotten, uh, I don't have time most, I don't have a lot of time to go to social media, look at everything that gets posted, but I just look at whatever is sent to me on, uh, through my phone. And, uh, so there was an incident, there was a car that was, uh, um, they pursued in center line and it was fleeing and looting and ended up in Dearborn Heights. And, uh, just to sum it up, it's still under investigation. Uh, our officers located the vehicle in, uh, Dearborn Heights and, uh, they tried to approach, uh, the vehicle and, uh, there was somebody in it, the, uh, basically the person in the vehicle, there was black tile windows, they couldn't see who was, if anybody's in it. They tried to run the police officer over and there were several of them on scene. And, uh, the police officer drew and fired two shots, you know, at the vehicle. So the person got grazed and, you know, he was, uh, you know, he's, he was in custody. So, uh, I haven't, I haven't seen any updates as of today. But, uh, the, the officers did an amazing job. Uh, they handled the situation very professional, I'm proud of them. And I've seen them, seen other officers in another, uh, incident that happened that they, uh, very professional, uh, they han- they handled it very professionally. And I was very proud of them. There was about five officers that responded to another scene that, uh, they did an amazing job. I'm proud of all of them. And also I want to commend Sergeant Suggs, he got promoted a few days ago. I know several of you showed up to his promotion. Um, I want to congratulate him and I'm very proud of him.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We, we all got, and I got, the email from our, uh, Bob Ankrapp and then also the announcement. So I didn't want to allude that. We, we all did and we got an email from the mayor. So thank you.
And I'll continue doing it. If anything of big concern, I'll make sure that you guys hear it from us first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
And Councilor Chair, I'm sorry, I just want to get clarification on record. So typically you're the council chair and you got the pro tem. So obviously if there's something goes down, you know, there's, sometimes it's pretty hard to go back, like, like, you know, the other day. It took me a few hours to get back to my office to draft the email. And, but I did call you right away and I called the council chair pro tem. So I just want to let the other council know, I mean, I'm following protocol, I'm going by the process as it should, you know, first let the council chair know the pro tem. And I don't know how you want to handle the situation, but I will actually update the all seven council members when I get back to my desk. So just to let you know, this, this is my process, this is the way it's going to happen, unless you guys want it differently.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm going to ask you a point blank question because I, 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 I get concerned about rumors flying around. Are you, or do you have any plans of building anything on that golf course?
No, other than a great golf course.
Thank you.
I golf too.
Okay.
And, and you know, I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I agree with the gentleman earlier. I, if I golf, it has to be in Dearborn Heights. I'd rather have it be a world-class golf course than be something embarrassing. And I, I didn't appreciate that comment. But, uh, uh, that's.
I beg to ask for your forgiveness and yours. I worked there as a volunteer, they didn't pay me nothing. I picked up the trash, I filled in the sand traps and whatever there was. And I did a heck of a job, I thought. But when you said you thought it was bad, I thought, man, I worked for nothing. But I hope you come up differently next time.
Okay.
And, and I don't mean so much, I just want to respond to this.
Okay, quickly, because we, we can't, it's got to be a public comment.
And I don't want you to think I was talking about your hard work and I'm sure the work that you put forward, but I'd like to also believe that the, the gentleman that was operating that place may have not done such a good job and it seems like he didn't. Uh, I think that place could have been really, look, this is Dearborn Heights, I'm not going to shortcut us anymore. It, this is, we're at a 10, that's where our standards need to be. We're not going to accept a five or a four or a three anymore. We're only accepting 10s. And if you can't give me a 10, which your service was a 10, but the former concierge was not giving us a 10, he was giving us a four and we were just accepting it. So if the next concierge can't give me a 10, guess what, I don't want you. That's how, that's it, there's a new day in Dearborn Heights today and God bless everybody here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bo Baydo. Okay, any other announcements?
Councilor Chair.
I have announcements.
One quick second. Madam, and then we'll go to Councilman. Go ahead, Madam.
I just have a couple of quick amount, announcements. A couple of quick announcements. I wanted to update our registered voters on redistricting. We have been at a standstill right now because we are waiting upon the state to give us information and we can't get that information until the May 3rd special election in some communities are complete, meaning Dearborn. Okay, because there's some districting changes there. So as soon as we get the information and as soon as we, everybody should be getting new voters' cards, um, we don't anticipate any precinct changes as far as boundary lines. Uh, but I just want to let you know the clerk's office is on top of it. As soon as, uh, we hear from the state, they update the qualified voter file, then we can review what we have to review and, um, then we'll get that, um, information out. I can't even run a report on what we need to send to the printer to send out the absentee ballot applications because the system doesn't allow us to, because we're on hold. So that's on redistricting. I also wanted to let you know that, or anyone that's in, interested in, there's two school districts in our community that will have open positions, um, this year. Crestwood has, um, some as well as District 7. We do have that information on our election plate, page online and paper packets are available at, uh, in the clerk's office. That, those names will be on the November 8th, um, ballot. And then last but definitely not least, tomorrow is a very special day. It is National Administrative Professionals' Days. Administrative professionals keep our world turning behind the scenes. They're our first point of communication and organization. So thank them for all their hard work. At our city, we have many, yes, we have. And I'm going to say their names because I think it's important. We have Kimberly Marinelli, Sherry Winnie, Matthew Paul, Nicole Buckman, Carol Barlow, Darla Mandau, Michelle Payne, Cheryl Frank, Julie Weekly, Michelle Bianchi, Sally Ramos, Sheila Wall, uh, Tamara Watt, Janice Bell, Beth Koval, um, Anthony Stewart, Lisa McCaffrey, I don't even want to, Susan Bywelek, um, Josie Camilleri, Pamela Harper, Valentine Peppers, Nadia Noradine, Janet Lucas, Stephanie Shaki, and last but certainly not least is Dana Flomart, our council secretary as well, she's a clerk. And George Anne. So, um, they're, they're very, very, very hard workers and remember to thank them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman, go ahead.
Okay, I, uh, Lynn, are you done?
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right, great, and I appreciate all of you. I, I met most of you. Okay, especially Dane over there on the end. All right, I have three announcements. The post office is having a day where they collect non-perishable items. And that's for the entire country, from what I understand, and it is May 14th. So if you can collect a few things, put them in a bag, put them in a box and have them on your porch so that they can pick them up and get them to the right people, that would be appreciated. Again, that's May 14th. And then locally, we have our E Course Creek Commission tomorrow evening, 6 o'clock. Uh, Mr. Deeb can't make it, but we will have some things to talk about. So if you care to come at 6 o'clock at 3335 South Beach Daily, we will be there waiting for you. And then on Thursday evening, we have the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, 7 o'clock, same location. And our ordinance director, uh, will be there and he will be our main speaker. We also have coffee and cookies. So please attend one or both of those meetings and put your non-perishable items out on the 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I thought of a couple of things, uh, you know, uh...
Okay, but we, yeah, Councilman, we've got a short, please.
Is it 11 o'clock?
Yeah, no?
We have plenty of time, but anyway, thank you. Um, you know, the, the mayor, uh, mentioned a couple of things. And first of all, I want to thank him, uh, he's, he's been involved with our, uh, rain garden maintenance for the last several years, then, you know, not only showing up there, but, you know, actually physically working his butt off, he's done, he's done a great job. He also, he mentioned the condition of the golf course and these, these conditions didn't happen over the winter. And, you know, um, we've owned a golf course for like six years or something now or something and, you know, shame on us in, in the past administration for not checking these things out until now. I mean, we, we let it get that way. We weren't on top of things. So, you know, you can, you can, you can point the finger and play the blame game all day, but you know what, it's time to stop playing the blame game and start taking action here. You know, the, the greens need to be mowed. It's our responsibility to maintain this. I've got, you know, I can find out in the next day or two what it, what it costs us to get in there and mow those greens. Once those greens go, and you know what, it's just, it's just a field and then trees will start growing on it and then, you know, it's just going to be a big wetlands. And, um, I, um, I, there's things I like to talk about, about the golf course and the contract negotiations. I'm, I'd like to talk about it in a closed session, otherwise I'll be bringing them up at the next meeting and, uh, people won't be happy. But, um, we, you know, we need to get, get to that golf course and take care of it now while, while this, you know, we, we've been talking for over a month now, negotiations, and maybe it's time to put it out for bids again. It just, it seems like it's, you know, from all I know, there's, there's no advancement. You know, there might be, but I don't know, I haven't been told. And, uh, I've asked for updates from the past administration on the golf course, everyone knows, almost every meeting, give me an update on the golf course, how much does it make it? No one ever said anything about it. And now this year, all of a sudden, it's, A, you know, it's terrible condition, this guy's, you know, you know, we're, we're, we're running a guy into the mud without, you know, have, having proof about anything that's being said, be it true or false. But a lot of things are being said and, you know, be careful what you're saying because you, you better make sure it's true or you might be opening yourself for, uh, for lawsuits. You know, the golf course is ours and I, I'm going to beat it into the ground and we need to take care of it, we need to mow them, mow them greens. It's our responsibility, even if it costs us money. We dropped the ball, we should have, we should have had all our ducks in a row and transferred from one to another overnight. And it's a seamless transfer. But unfortunately, things didn't work out that way and so we've got the, we've got the, the, the situation that we have and we have to get in there and we have to get in there. I've talked to some people that do take care of golf courses and they say, you've got to get in there and cut them greens, otherwise you're going to lose them, you know. And, uh, once again, our E Course Creek Cleanup and Rain Garden Maintenance, a week from this Saturday, Richard A. Young Center, Flyers and the Vestabule. Thank you. Okay, so I'll give a counter to that. So again, Councilman, these types of statements are starting, are going to start spreading all kinds of rumors, you know, we're not taking care of the greens. I personally was on a call with the mayor, with the organization, that he's working on to make sure that the greens are being cut. So we got to be careful with some of the verbiage that, that we're throwing out. Are they being cut?
I, I, he's working on, I was on the phone.
Oh, I'm just saying, I'm stating a fact.
I know, but the problem is when you keep making these types of statements, you're implying that nobody's working on it, and I'm telling you, people are working on it. He's all over it.
I'm just stating a fact.
I know, but...
I'm stating a fact, Council Chair.
I understand. I have no problem stating facts.
I'm not starting any rumors.
But you're saying, you know, shame, we've left it, let it go, we never checked on it, and these are statements that we've got to be careful with, because it's going to imply the totally wrong impression to potential people that want to have outings there, to potential people that want to golf there, to, and then also, not to mention, starting swirling rumors of development and all that, and it's not there. All I'm asking you for, Councilman, is we have to leave, like we received an email. There's certain things that the administration does, there's certain things that we do, but if you have a concern, I have no problem with that. Contact either the mayor's office or the administration, sit down and have that discussion. Some things are not to be aired publicly.
Well, that's why I need a closed session. I, I mean, I will air some stuff.
But again, again, some things, so if right now we had our mayor, for example, and, and look, I'll make something clear. I'm, I defend whoever needs to be defended, and I'll come after whoever needs to be come after. That's where I've always rolled, and that's where I'll always roll. I won't change that. But you don't air the dirty laundry about the things that are potential issues with the golf course publicly. You work on it as administration. We have good people like Ali Deep, we have good people that are taking it over, and somebody's all, I know for a fact, they're all over it. You don't sit there and have on every council meeting, we're not going to come on every council meeting, I won't do it, I'll tell you that much, and say, let's have all kinds of announcements of all the things that have gone wrong at this golf course. That's not good PR. That's PR 101, terrible PR that we're giving to the golf course. So if you want it to remain open as a golf course, and you want it to open, and you don't want it developed, we've got to cut down on these potential, A, rumors, and B, arguably, bad-mouthing the golf course.
What rumors, and excuse me for stating fact?
Well, for example, when we make a statement such as nothing is being done...
On the golf course.
That means nothing is being done, but that's not a true statement at all.
It's not getting cut?
Because there is things being done.
The pumps are being looked at, that's the only thing I heard.
That is absolutely...
That's all I heard today, was the pumps are being looked at.
Okay, so now let's go backwards.
They're not being looked at, they're going to be...
So now let's go backwards. Our job, we are the legislative part of the government. Then there is the executive branch of the government, which in this case would be the administration and the mayor, okay? And then, of course, there's the judicial, which we're not directly involved with. Let them do their thing, but they can't, every time they do something or find a problem, come over and say, let me make an announcement about all the things that have gone wrong with this golf course. That would be terrible PR. If anybody knows anything about PR, anybody knows about running a business, anything about running a business, anybody who knows anything about marketing would know that that's not what you do. You don't badmouth this golf course. You clean it up, get it up and running, and then launch. And that's, and that's why I asked the mayor a point-blank question. Do you want development there? I, I'll ask myself, no, I don't want development there, and there's no plans of any development there, and there's no conversation of any development there, and there's no closed meeting session, even though you're going to hate this council, Miatki, any conversation about development there. So we've got to just watch these rumors, and watch the social media stuff, because it's just going to spread the wrong direction. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Rumors, you know, I mean, excuse me for, you know, I guess we don't want to be transparent and give the residents the fact.
No, we said nothing about transparency.
You said, they don't need to know all this stuff.
No, no, you do.
You said, we don't need to do it in public, you said.
No, we said, again...
Yeah, it's exactly what you said, Council Chair. You said, we don't need to talk about this in public.
Again, if there, whatever potential issues with the golf course, and I know there's a lot of potential issues, and I know for a fact, and I know Counselor Miatki is probably not going to like me saying this, but the last vendor that was there did a lot of damage there, without getting into the details, okay? There's some specific things, and you know what they are, but I'm not going to sit there and air them out, okay? Because these are things that you take care of. If you are the owner of the property, which we are, you take care of it, you clean it up, cross these, dot the i's, get it up and running. And I know, again, administration is all over getting it up and running, but it is not to the level that they are comfortable with to get it up and running. I know they're vent, they're taking it over, the contract, oh my God, the, not the contract.
Sorry?
Yeah, ASAP Brothers. They're all over making sure that it gets up and running. I know for a fact, based on the way they've run businesses, they will get things up and running, but we've got to give them a chance. We can't, at every council meeting, sit and air out all the potential either. Bad things about the golf course, there will be. I had bad things going on at home, but I don't walk out of my house saying, hello, neighbors, let me tell you all the bad things going on in my house, just not a good thing to do. That's all I'm saying. Okay, thank you. Any other council members or mayor or anybody? I can't see that.
News.
News, not just good news, bad news.
Absolutely, but again, there's a lot of things that's being worked on. Nothing is being kept from the audience. They automatically work it and get it up and running, and you're going to see a golf course. There's no plans of anything else but a golf course there. Okay.
Okay, let's go positive from now on.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's keep them moving, come on.
Any, any other announcements? I hear none. Next is public comments. Is there any public, you had an announcement? Okay.
I try to come to, Sue Sachada, I try to come to as many meetings as I can, considering you meet at the same time as Dearborn half the time, which I also cover. I don't want to just publish your sanitized, clean news. I want to, I want to publicize all the news, the good, bad, and the ugly. The residents want to know. And not everyone can watch and attend the council meetings. I can't even cover all the stuff you, you get into, but I'm going to tell them what the residents, what the council people are concerned about, and you just can't give me the nice, good news when it's done, Mr. Abdullah. You have to, you have to expose it warts and all, you have to expose the growing pains. I covered you guys when you were fighting with the previous mayor. I sat through those four, five-hour-long meetings and, and played back your quotes, and I covered all your fights and squabbles and blood sports. Don't tell me now that it's bad PR to only cover the, you know, if you only cover the good events. Don't you dare try to hide things from me, or I will dig in, and I will cover every scandal I can find. So don't try to cover, don't try to hide it.
But see, here we go again, there's no scandals out there. Okay, so we've got to be careful with some of the words that are being put out there.
Don't try to hide the bad news from me.
There's no hiding bad news. What I will say again, if anybody wants any type of business, and this is a business that we are running here, that we want to be not only profitable for our city, not be a loss for our city, but be up and running, and up and running well. With that being the case, with that being the case, you don't make an announcement at every council meeting, all the things that have gone potentially bad. If there's some major needs to be looked at and dealt with, absolutely. But when you listen here, and you try to just bring out nothing but bad stuff, that's bad business 101. If you want that golf course to be run right, and up and running, and successful, you don't air out every single thing that goes wrong, in any business, including the newspaper, there's things going on, but I, I'm going to have to, I'm sorry.
You don't scold your fellow councilman because he's delivering anything but good news. That's the business of government. You bring up the things that are the problems. You bring them up in a public forum.
Okay, I could take this one to the next level, but I won't. Out of respect, I won't.
Excuse me?
I said, I could take this to the next level, but out of respect, I won't.
So I, I will just say, I don't think Council Chair or your indirect ones want to hide it.
Absolutely not.
Everybody appreciates you, I assume your work goes above...
Mo, you try to, you try to smooth things over for everything, and, and it's your, it's your personality, but you're trying to, to, you're trying to tell me that...
All right, Sue, with due respect, now you've become a part of the news, so we've got to go on to the next subject.
I'm telling you that I don't want you to, to tell Winsel not to mention bad news, because, oh my God, other people might find out about that bad news.
Counselor. Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, I, I want to address this issue about stain and lane. I want to address this issue a little, little bit more about...
Make the microphone closer.
What I consider to be more of an issue. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Your voice is not normally too quiet. There's certainly an interest in transparency, but there is a public interest in also making sure that we can do things competently and without jeopardizing the city's position as an entity when it comes to negotiations. No, I mean, I know you're rolling your eyes, Sue, but basically what it comes down to is that sometimes, if we are supposed to be so transparent, and we are negotiating either with a union, or we are negotiating with a potential concessionaire, we need to make sure that certain things are kept between city officials to ensure that we don't reveal something that might be able to be used against us in negotiations. And so part of what the mayor is referring to is a very important issue in terms of those negotiations when it comes to these pumps.
I was not concerned with the mayor, it was, I was concerned with Abdullah chewing out Winsel for only getting bad news.
I don't chew out anybody.
I'm going to write good news, I'm going to write...
Okay.
But I guess, if, if, if I may, without saying too much more, but there's more to the story in this particular situation that involves a communication that I sent, which would be attorney-client privilege, and that's all I'm going to end up saying about it, and that's part of what you are, what you are hearing, and that's part of what the reaction is about. So...
So you're telling me that I can't write about it, because I don't know the...
No, 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 no. You can write about whatever you want to write about. The issue is, is that some of the discourse that's going on here involves things that aren't being discussed, in part because they have to do with the communication from me. That has to do, and that is attorney-client privileged communication.
So it's took out the ice for...
That would be a fair assessment, I believe. And that, I think, I think that kind of, kind of covers some of the backstory, as you might end up putting it in your line of work, but that's part of what, what we're dealing with, and that's part of the tension, I think, that what you're picking up.
Okay, because I don't like hearing one council member telling another council member not to talk about bad news, and only to talk about good news.
No, okay, I'm going to let it go right now. Okay, go ahead.
I just have an announcement. I want to remind everybody that June 8th through the 12th, we have the Spirit Festival going on. I know it's early, but we're going to start our advertising as soon as we can. Wednesday, we have the Senior Jubilee. We're also doing the Veterans Celebration that day, and you guys will be receiving a letter from me. We're requesting...
It's Wednesday?
I'm sorry?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, June 8th, yes, and we're going to be, I'm going to be sending a letter to you guys requesting to sponsor tables for the veterans. We're going to give 50 tickets for the Senior Jubilee to the veterans, and so you'll be receiving those pretty soon, and you'll have a chance to sponsor an individual veteran to participate at $10 a person, or an entire table, which would be $80 for eight people. So that's what I'm looking at. I think it'll be a really nice addition for the day. Also, we've got, Thursday, we've got Basam Salaw, starting at 7 o'clock. Friday, we've got Magic Bus, which is a really good band. Friday, or Saturday, we've got Steve King and the Diddlies, and then Sunday, we've got Denise Davis and the Motown Sensation, so it's going to be really, really nice. I'm looking forward to it, and I'm excited. We've got a really wonderful concert series set up for the summer. Yes, we will be at Warren Valley, but we can actually operate our concerts outside without using any of the inside facilities, so looking forward to a great summer.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. All right, next, there's no other announcements, correct? Okay? Next up is, any announcements on Zoom, ma'am clerk?
Bill Dishon.
Bill Dishon? Go ahead, Bill. Director of Ordnance, Bill Dishon.
Good evening, Council Chair. Hopefully you can hear Kevin having some connection issues tonight. I'll give it my best shot. I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Wait, Bill, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Talk louder. Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay, I'll, I'll do the best I can. I want to keep it short as possible. I just wanted to make everybody aware that we are issuing grass violations already. We wrote the first one today, so make sure you cut your grass. Also, the mayor has spoken about this in the past. We're going to start ordinance sweeps. We're going to be sending out letters, starting in the TIPA district. They should be going out the first week of May, and the intent is to sweep the area probably the weekend of May 20th. Like I said, just be, just be cognizant that we already, we already issued some, a grass violation, and we're looking for that already. I just wanted to say happy Administrative Professionals Day, I think that's tomorrow. Appreciate Lynn, City Clerk, mentioning all the names she did. All those people are amazing. I appreciate everybody, especially my staff member, Michelle Bianchi, personally. And also, I'd like to thank Councilman Mo Baydun, specifically for helping with the Annapolis Senior Class of 2022 All Night Party. He's amazing, I appreciate what he did. And Councilman Muscat made mention of having ordinance do the garbage day violations. That's a great concept, but we just don't have the staff for it. I'll talk more with him about that later, so, like I said, I'm going to keep it short. Thank you, Council Chair. Everybody have a good evening, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director.
I can just add on to that.
Okay, quickly.
And just because it's a small business, I don't want to take the credit. All I was able to do was reach out to business owners. Big L's Pizzeria will be donating the food to the all-night party for the D7 seniors. Custer Co. will be donating ice cream to the D7 seniors. Chiquila will be donating sweets, and then they're having the all-night party at Zep Zone. They were charging them $35. I asked them if they could reduce it down to 30, which saved them $5 per student. So I appreciate the recognition, but it goes back to the business owners.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council Chair. Thank you, Mo. I, I shouldn't have done that, I know you didn't want any accolades.
No, 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 it's okay, I want to recognize them, it's, they're...
Yeah, thank you to all the businesses as well, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much, Council Chair.
Thank you. All right, next up, if there's no other announcements, we'll go ahead and go to public comments. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name, the city you live in, and the street you live on. Come on up.
Trapkowski, Columbia Street. Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, Durban Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. Mr. Mayor, members of the audience, $1.8 million is what we pay for the golf course. If you sold a house for $1.8 million, don't you think you would change the locks? Who's at fault for not changing the locks? Was that not suggested to somebody? We have a building and maintenance department, we have a D-W department. $1.8 million, damn right I'd be changing the locks.
Well, that's a great question, honest to God. It really is.
Who's in charge? Who didn't bring up the suggestion? Change the locks? Now let's go on to something positive. We got a great opportunity to make Warren Valley a fantastic place. We have a Parks and Recreation Department that can be moved over there, okay? Expand the center, make it a recreational center for everybody. Your seniors, get them involved, your kids, whatever it takes, there's room to do it. We can do something better with that place. I went through that building when it was being bid on with Mr. Mackey, Mr. Sall, and Mr. Issa, and that place is trashed. If it were me, I'd be bulldozing it, but these guys have a better sight for what's going to happen. So if you want, I can bring my lockpicking kit out there tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock and rekey it for you.
You do that?
Yes, I'm a locksmith.
We can't do that.
I'll do it for free.
Okay.
I might need a golf cart, though.
Anybody else in the audience that has any public comments?
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Durban Heights. Couple things, walkthroughs at city buildings, wow, I wonder if the maintenance department knows about it, but I have to move on from there, I can't go on. I'm still wondering where the IMA's list is for the salaries for the budget. It seems that's taken a long time. You had to have those numbers to put the numbers together, I was hoping we could get that quicker. I lost my train of thought here, and we'll move on. The city Westland had put out their, their, they got $13 million in ARPA money, and looking at the list of stuff that they approved, they approved $5 million for their rainy day fund spread over three, three years, $3.5 million for public safety and public service vehicles and equipment, $1.5 million for affordable housing and senior care through collaboration with Prophecy and Village of Michigan, $1.5 million for building and property improvements at the Police Department Golf Course and the Ice Arena, $450,000 for Central City Park Pond improvements, $400,000 for purchase of residential basement flooding mitigation equipment, which happens here, $350,000 for hero pay for all full-time employees excluding elected officials, which if they have about 350 employees, that's about $1,000 an employee, $300,000 for purchases of a tree truck and chipper to be used for power outage mitigation, and $200,000 for public broadband infrastructure in city parks. I know we put $2.7 million into our rainy day fund and $10 million in the Water Department. Hearing what was going on today, because a few things changed, I think it might be a good idea to maybe only put in 8 million, pull 2 million out. Maybe we can use 1.5 million to help with the golf course improvements, with the pump, with the Ashfall Pass, with that. Maybe we can use $500,000 for the dispatch improvements, maybe that'll help save funds going. And getting back to the budget here, because that's all I got on that, because I'm going to run short on time, I think we need to streamline department head salaries. The controller's salary in the last two years has gone up $46,000. I have laborers that have been working here for 21 years, I don't make $46,000 a year without working overtime. without working overtime. I think department head salaries should be streamlined. We can use some of that money to get some overtime back, to get every union member raises, of course, all of them that are negotiating right now to get new senior coordinators, so the deputy director doesn't have to do it all the time. There's things we can do, I think, I think.
One quick second. I had promised you an extra minute, so go ahead.
Oh, okay.
I think that we should look at streamlined salaries. People are gonna tell you, well, this is what the industry's paying. Yes, that may be what the industry's paying. This city cannot afford what the industry is paying. The industry pays my laborers that I manage $3 to $4 more an hour than what they're getting paid. The industry, my job, is $5 to $7 an hour more. You're not gonna pay me industry wages. You're not gonna pay them industry wages. We have to live within our means. If everybody gets streamlined and bring everybody up slowly, I think that's what needs to be done. I think $115,000 is ridiculous right now, especially since you don't know who that person is. If that person's actually gonna work out, because we had one department head not too long ago, he botched a lot of things up, and it's costing the city a lot of money to fix it right now. And that will be it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else in the audience? Come on up, sir.
My name's Ron Frenzy. Live on Fairwood Street in Dearborn Heights. And eight months ago, the city cut down a city tree between my sidewalk and curb, and the stump is still there. And I was just wondering, it's been eight months, when will the stump be removed?
Have you contacted DPW, sir?
That's the question. Who do I contact for that?
If you just called DPW, I don't have their number memorized.
Which person?
791.
6,000. Which person?
791-6,000. Actually, after you're done, sir, Robert Conrad in the back there, that's the Director of DPW, he'll be able to help you out.
We have it on our list. I know where you're at, Ron.
Okay.
I don't know where I'm at.
Done. You're on the list.
I know, I know. Okay.
But just a little side note, it's two separate companies, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Bob Conrad? That cut the tree down, and then a different company that does the stump. Come on up, Bob.
Robert Conrad, Director, DPW. Dearborn Tree, when they take a tree down for us, which would be one of the trees that my crew, you know, wouldn't take down, maybe because it's a larger-sized tree, they take down a tree and stump it at the same time. When we take down a tree with my own crews, we do not have the stumping equipment to take down or to do the stump, so it goes on a tree list, and we have a separate contractor that takes care of our stumps. So, you know, it is, it is a rather lengthy list. I like it to be shorter than it is, but, you know, again, you know, we rely on that contractor to take down the stumps for us. And, you know, sometimes it does take longer than others to get them out, but, you know, every tree we take down gets put on a stump list, and basically, they work in the order in which they are. I mean, you know, I'm sorry that it takes eight months to get a stump, but that's the reality of, you know, the contractor that we're working with. I guess I can talk to my staff and see if they think we should look for another contractor.
Eight months, we should.
That can get it done quicker. But, you know, I guess that's the best answer I can give you right now.
Okay, can you help the gentleman though with his?
Mr. Conrad?
Mr. Conrad, before you do, Councilman.
Just on that note, he's been waiting eight months. The city cut down a bunch of trees on Wilson between Beach Daily and Inkster. Those stumps have been there for about two and a half or three years.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly.
And the city cut the tree out. They were strong. The stumps are still there.
But just to be a little fair to the DPW there, I assure eight employees.
I understand, but I'm just saying, but if it's a contractor that's gotta come out, then we need to look for somebody else.
So I just have a quick question, and I actually had this conversation with the mayor today, too, in his office. You know, we have this long list of trees that need to be trimmed, or they need to be removed, or the stump needs to be removed. Do we have a plan set up? Hey, this is the plan. This is what we're gonna execute. This is how much we can do. Do we have anything set up, a strategic plan of what we're gonna do to minimize this list?
We have a list of all the trees. They go out and evaluate them. They prioritize them on a scale of one to five. Fives would be a critical tree that would take, you know, a priority. So, I mean.
But do we have, do we have a plan to minimize the list? I mean, I understand the tragedy that we're going down.
We have our staff, you know, when, you know, we can't do trees every day because we need to sweep. We need to do other things. Again, you know, we prioritize our list. We take care of the fives and fours. You know, unfortunately, with the staff I have and the days I have to work, you know, there are some things that remain on lists a lot longer than they probably need to be, but I still have a budget I have to work within. You know, so.
Does the budget cover to cut down those trees? What do we do with the residents that keep calling about the tree issue? We just tell them, hey, I can't help you.
If they're trims, you know, unfortunately, I can tell you that you're on the list, and, you know, we'll get to you someday. But, I mean, I have to work within a budget. You know, I don't have an unlimited budget. I don't have unlimited hours. I don't have unlimited staff. I mean, I can't wave a magic wand and make it all disappear. I wish I could, but, you know, that's not the reality. The reality is I have to work within my limitations. And, you know, I think the crew that, or the people that I have are doing a good job of prioritizing what is dangerous and what needs to come down, and what is just a nuisance or an eyesore, you know, which is pretty much the ones that, you know, don't get addressed. And those are the ones you hear about all the times, the nuisances and the eyesores. They're not dangerous, you know, and when you have to work within a limited budget, nuisances and eyesores don't get the attention they should.
What about the ones that lift the sidewalks up on people's sidewalks where they become a trip hazard? Are those considered a nuisance?
Those are, those are the homeowner's responsibility to take care of those, to, you know, sidewalks are the homeowner's responsibility.
No, no, but I'm talking about when the tree's branches are starting to lift up the sidewalk.
So when the sidewalk's replaced, the contractor doing the sidewalk replacement should be cutting those roots out so that that doesn't occur in the future. The tree coming down, I mean, I don't have the resources to take down every tree that looks.
When I walked through the south end, and I was knocking on doors this last election, I swear to you, every street I walked on, there were branches that were massive. I wanted to walk my son, I wanted to walk my dog. I couldn't be able to do that, and that's just unfair. I know it's not you. I'm just, I'm emotional about it, that's all. It just sucks to be able to say, there's nothing we can do.
And, I mean, I don't have any validation to back this up, because I haven't been here that long, but the crew that I work with, the supervisory staff right now, they tell me that on windy days like we had last week, we got a few, you know, down limbs and branches, but they said this is nothing like what they would have had three, four years ago. That, you know, they would have been on branches and limbs for an entire week picking them up. So, I mean, I think they've made proactive corrections to get some of these trees trimmed and things, but, you know, again, you know, we're a small department with limited funds, and we're working as hard as we can, the best we can with what we have.
I believe, we had a conversation, Council Chair, if that's okay. Alaid, weren't we gonna put together a resolution so that the tree that's on the city's property was massive, and the resident wanted to pay to get it removed and replace it? We were gonna put something like that together, and I believe our corporation, Council, and then it just disappeared. But I remember speaking about this last summer, about this, and we said it was in the works of running this up. Can we, can we?
I think that would need to be an ordinance amendment. You'd have to amend the ordinance to allow that. Right now, the ordinance doesn't allow you to do that.
I mean, we can't tell the resident, there's nothing we can do. It's just gonna stay dead. I can't tell you, you can't cut it. The city can afford to cut it.
Dead we can cut. Dead we can take care of, but.
Or then we can't trim them. Listen, we got massive trees in the city. Your neighbor on Hess. I saw that neighbor.
All right, guys, we gotta stay with the podium, guys. Thank you.
That's unfair, Council Chair. I'm sorry. I agree with her.
All right, I know. We gotta keep this on the podium. Okay, ma'am? Okay. Anybody else have any quick question for Mr. Conrad?
Yeah, I'm.
He's got, okay.
One last thing.
But we can't make this a study session.
I know, I'm just gonna stop. And Mr. Conrad does a great job. I swear to God. I want you guys to know, the guy goes, he's gotta worry about tree sweeping, street sweeping. He's gotta worry about water main breaks. He worries about so many other things that are really happening. And you're only one director. I understand that. But I want you to know that it also becomes hard on all of us, from the administration down to the council. When somebody's calling us constantly saying, help me with this tree, I feel helpless that you can't get anybody to cut it. And I'm just venting. I'm not even saying it. It's hard on us where I say, you can't take out your own trunk. You can't take down your own tree. You can't trim your tree. If you do, you're gonna get a ticket. And if it's dead, too bad, you gotta live with it. And we'll get to it, because there's a long list of 100 other trees that, you know, I'm sorry, there's a list. And it's embarrassing.
Okay. Why don't we do this? Ma'am Clerk, tomorrow when we talk, maybe we'll set like about a 30-minute study session sometime soon, because I spoke with the Director, was it about a week ago or something like that? We talked about maybe the ordinance may need to be adjusted. So we'll do maybe a study session, maybe half-hour study session, see where we're at, and then see where we go from there.
And for the record, it's completely, it's not Mr., it's not on him.
It's never the position, it's never the person, it's the position. Okay.
It's not the position either. I swear, it's not the person or the position. I'm not smoothing this out. I'm telling you, it just, it sucks. We're putting this predicament.
It's challenging. It's, it sucks. Okay, but let's, let's keep this up here, please. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Conrad. Any other, any other public comments?
He's, he's still got his. Tom.
We all saw you had something else.
He's still got time.
Okay, come on up.
Besides the stump, after they, after they cleared the stump, there's all sawdust. The extra contractor says they don't pick it up. Who picks up the sawdust?
Okay, but again, you can be seeing Mr. Conrad, and he'll, he'll be able to have a full discussion with you on that.
Okay, just two other things. One is, everybody knows that inflation is terrible. Inflation is the highest in 40 years. And it's bad because we pay higher gas prices, food prices, but there's a bonus for the city. It has to do with property. Property goes up and up and up. What does that mean? More taxes. So, so a year from now, the city could actually have a special windfall, because it was just announced, as an example, from February last year to February this year, the average price of houses in the whole country went up 20%. And it could be higher. So I would like to request maybe that the new city assessor, by next week, it should be an easy thing to do, come up with a plan, and just saying, if the, if the price of houses next year go up, you know, if the price of houses this year go up 15%, 20%, 25%, 30%, how much additional money will the city have? That's a bonus, it's a windfall.
They'll definitely get into it, but just FYI, because of Proposal A, the amount of taxes that any resident pays, provided they're still living in the property, is a homestead, is capped no more than the CPI index or maximum, which is Consumer Price Index, or maximum of 5%. So it is capped. Just because of value, the house went up 20%. The taxes will not go up 20%.
Didn't know that, okay. And then the last thing is, one of the best mayors, I think, in the whole, in the whole state, is that Mayor Duggan. He really is a, is a tornado on trying to figure out, you know, how to get extra money. Yesterday, and in today's news, he mentioned that they picked up over $100 million from the federal government because of, because of special Build Back Better programs. And one of the things they picked up was a brand, like I said, they picked up $100 million. One of the things they picked up was a brand-new rec center. Our special Kim wants to make a, make a new rec center. They got it for free. We could get it for free. So I thought maybe, maybe, and since the mayor already did it, Mayor Duggan, that our mayor, plus our rec director, Kim, could combine, find out how they did it, and go ahead and get a brand-new rec center all for free.
Okay, there is work. I talked with the administration, I think it was about two or three meetings ago, and they are working on sharpening their pencils to add a grant manager or grant writer, and that's where a lot of that money comes in from, from the federal level.
Oh, it is, yeah. Because I thought, because at last April 12th meeting, you had Ms. Rachel Lapointe said that she has a way to get like $25 million through COVID relief. It sounds crazy, but, but all that money is all there. It's just that if you would work with her and give her incentive of a big bonus, you know, anytime you can pick up $25 million and pay somebody like a million, hey, that's, that's, that's a bargain. I mean, I'll do that all day. I'll do that all day. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comments in the audience? Councilman, just please announce if you're speaking as a resident or as a councilman.
Resident of Dearborn Heights, Tom Wensley. I live on Two Lane Street. To answer one of his questions, my neighbor had a tree cut down and the stump dug out, and the company that does the stump digging or chipping, they leave all the wood chips there, but the city does come by and they pick up the wood chips and they put dirt down, topsoil down. I believe they're still doing that, aren't they, Director Conrad? Yeah, yeah. And speaking of Director Conrad, these guys are doing a fantastic job. I mean, people might have seen a couple Facebook posts I did with these guys working on Sundays, Sunday mornings, and digging trenches and water main breaks, risking, literally risking their lives, you know, for, for the residents of their place, make sure they have proper utilities. And they should be commended, and with all our other departments, too. And one thing, and he, he won't say it, but I will, one of the biggest, the newest throwbacks is the elimination of overtime for all of our different departments, only in emergency situations. So I'm sure that has a lot to do with, you know, handcuffing him and, and getting the extra stuff done, like picking up the branches and stuff. Hopefully, we'll get over that hump pretty soon and get back to, you know, the regular overtime. And I'm back up here talking, you know, about the golf, golf course. We, as a city, you guys as a city council voted and gave the contract or the bid to a company, I think it was five, five or six weeks, five weeks ago, and at that time, I'm sure you didn't realize that it would take a long time to deal with this. And sure, there's issues that come up, and, you know, we don't know what the exact issues are, but they're, hopefully, they're legitimate. And, but we can't, the council can't wait another month, or another two months, or maybe all summer, or maybe by Christmas. I think the council should get together and set up a timeframe for this, another couple weeks. And after two months, you think, well, you know, back in, when the council agreed on this vendor, you know, two months of contract negotiations is your limit. After that, someone's gotta, we gotta go back, put it out, back out for bids again. I mean, that's, I think it would be a fair thing, because we've given everyone, the city and the vendor, enough time to work things off. If they're not, they're never gonna be worked out after a couple of months. And recently, in our recent budget hearings, there was a, a new position created for an IT position, and it's greatly needed, you know, and, but it's a pretty high salary, and I guess that's the going salary. I don't know. It's $115,000 a year. But the thing that gets me is the benefit package for this person and this position. It's a $60,000 benefit package, and that's $60,000 more than we're offering our union employees this year. This person's gonna get $60,000 worth of benefits, and our union employees aren't getting anything, because the city doesn't have any money. And I'm sticking up for our union people as a resident, and I think everyone should just not sit back there and say, let's wait to see what happens. Let's voice our opinion, and let's get this contract settled. It's been almost a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Motion to adjourn. Wait, one sec. We gotta give people on Zoom an opportunity. Anybody on Zoom that's looking to comment? Ma'am Clerk, anybody?
Just giving them a minute, but I don't see any hands up. Anybody on Zoom?
Nope. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Baydo.
Mr. Conrad, don't run off. Did he go?
Seconded, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Motion adjourned. Any, all in favor? Please state aye. Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good night.